Good evening. Before I begin, I'd like to offer two things. One, my gratitude to you for this invitation and for the work that you are doing. I know what it's like to be in a thankless job at times and to have people coming at you from all different directions and needing different things from you, and thanks for your commitment to it. The second is this, I know you see a lot of stuff come across your desk, I certainly see a lot of people come by my office, and I want to make you aware of one brief thing. We serve a lot of homeless people in our community, you know that's a challenge for all of us, and I don't know what the solution is. I know it's obnoxious to have people come and say, "Here's your problem, do something." But I do want to share with you that one of the guys who came by maybe a month or so ago, you know, when people come, you can usually tell there's something more going on in their life. Nothing stands in a vacuum. This is one of the guys that, when he speaks, you kind of believe him and tells the truth, and he lives in one of our tent encampments locally. And he told me that the night before, some law enforcement had come by to kind of clear out the camp, totally get why that needs to happen, but in that process, they shredded his tent with knives. Now, I haven't seen the tent, I wasn't there, I don't know if that's true or not. I don't think this guy's telling me a lie. I don't know what the solution is, I don't think cruelty is the answer, and in my opinion, that seems cruel. That's what that is, there it is, let's pray together. Mighty God, we thank you for all of which you blessed us even to this very hour. New every morning are your mercies, holy God. New every morning are your blessings, with ten thousand beside, as the old hymn tells us. We pray that you open our hearts to your will, that you guide our steps and lead us in your way. You're known to us by many names. We don't always all agree on what that means or what that looks like, but I think at the end of the day, we can come to this. But if the answer isn't centered on love, it's probably the wrong answer. So hold us fast to that standard, to your standard of love and compassion and grace and mercy. May we find ways forward that serve all of your children, the ones who voted for us and the ones who didn't, the ones who were raised here and the ones who moved here and the ones just passing through. In all our ways, we trust you, inspire our thinking, help us to dream big dreams and bold visions, help us to fulfill your will. We pray this in your holy and everlasting name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all call purposes, all council members are in attendance, except for Mr. Cattulo, Mr. Gambatista, and Mr. Randelski, who are all absent with notification. At this time, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is item five. I will entertain the motion to adopt items five A, B, and C, which are minutes. Five A is minutes from the special town council meeting May 6, 2025. Five B is regular town council meeting minutes from May 13, 2025. Five C is special town council meeting minutes from May 20, 2025. Can I have a motion to adopt these? Motion made by Ms. George, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Wakefield. Discussion, corrections. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. At this time, we're going to move on in the agenda. Next item up is item six A, which is a proclamation recognizing June 2025 as National Dairy Month, where as National Dairy Month began in 1937 as a way to promote drinking milk and has since evolved into an annual tradition celebrating the contributions of the dairy industry and the vital role dairy farmers play in our local and national economies. And whereas dairy products, including milk, cheese, yogurt, and butter, are important sources of essential nutrients such as calcium, potassium, vitamin D, and protein, contributing to the health and well-being of people of all ages. And whereas the dairy industry supports thousands of jobs across the country and contributes significantly to the agricultural strength and stability of our region. And whereas local dairy farmers work tirelessly to care for their animals, preserve the environment, and provide high-quality nutritious products to our community. And whereas National Dairy Month provides an opportunity for our residents to learn more about where their food comes from and to express appreciation for the farmers and workers behind these products. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Killonee Town Council does hereby recognize January 2025 as National Dairy Month. We appreciate the dairy farmers and their families and their unwavering dedication to our communities and the farming industry. Killonee Town Council, Jason Anderson Chairman, dated at Killonee, Connecticut this 10th day of June 2025. Agenda item six B, proclamation recognizing June 2025 as National Pollinator Month, where as pollinators including bees, butterflies, moths, beetles, hummingbirds, and bats play a vital role in maintaining the health of our ecosystems by facilitating the reproduction of over 75% of flowering plants and more than one-third of the food crops we consume. And whereas pollinators contribute to biodiversity, support the production of fruits, vegetables, nuts, and seeds, and are essential to sustainable agriculture and security. And whereas pollinator populations are in decline due to habitat loss, pesticide exposure, climate change, disease, and other environmental pressures, making their protection and conservation a matter of urgent public concern. And whereas National Pollinator Month, celebrated each June, raises awareness about the importance of pollinators and encourages actions to support pollinator health through habitat restoration, pollinator-friendly gardening, and education. And whereas individuals, communities, schools, and local governments all have a role to play in creating and preserving pollinator habitats and promoting environmental stewardship. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Killonee Town Council does hereby recognize June 2025 as National Pollinator Month to bring awareness of pollinators and encourage people to reach out to their citizen, fellow citizens, to provide support for this cause. Killonee Town Council, Jason Anderson Chairman, dated at Killonee, Connecticut this 10th day of June 2025. Agenda item six C, proclamation recognizing June 2025 as Post Traumatic Stress Disorder, PTSD Awareness Month. Whereas Post Traumatic Stress Disorder, PTSD, is a mental health condition that can develop after an individual experiences or witnesses a traumatic event, including but not limited to military combat, national disasters, serious accidents, or personal assault. And whereas PTSD affects an estimated 12 million adults in the U.S. annually, including veterans, first responders, survivors of violence, and many others whose lives have been profoundly impacted by trauma. And whereas PTSD is often misunderstood and stigmatized, which can prevent individuals from seeking the care and support they need and deserve. And whereas increased public awareness and understanding of PTSD can lead to earlier diagnosis, better access to effective treatment, and improved outcomes for those affected. And whereas June has been designated as PTSD Awareness Month, and June 27th is recognized nationally as PTSD Awareness Day, providing an important opportunity to educate the public, promote compassion, and encourage community-based support and healing. And whereas it is our responsibility as a community to support individuals living with PTSD, honor their courage, and work together to remove barriers to care. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Killonee Town Council does hereby recognize June 2025 as Post Traumatic Stress Disorder Awareness Month, to bring awareness to those with PTSD and to encourage people to reach out to their fellow citizens, to provide support, and remove the stigma associated with this disorder. Killonee Town Council, Jason Anderson Chairman, dated at Killonee, Connecticut this 10th day of 2025. At this time, we'll move on in the agenda. The next item up is item six D, presentation by Kevin McNeil from Quiet Corner Peer Support Group regarding opioid settlement fund request. Just make sure you hit the button on the microphone and the green lights turn on.
If I could pull up a close to myself?
It helps.
It helps. All right. Good evening. I want to thank the council for allowing us to present tonight. It's certainly going to be an emotional evening, and it's definitely fitting that June is PTSD Month. So again, thank you for allowing us to come and present in front of the sub-financial committee before. Tonight's going to be an emotional night, and I'm not going to sugarcoat it in any way. As the president of the Quiet Corner Peer Support Group, it's my job to be honest with the men and women who serve alongside me, and part of that honesty is being willing to talk about personal traumas. So tonight, we're not trying to plant anybody's emotion, we're not trying to come here and present these horrific stories, we're coming here to tell you why there's a need in our community. And while we do that tonight, I want you to think of this, there is some veteran or first responder somewhere in our nation, or could be in our community, that is in a dark place right now, and that veteran or first responder is going to take their life. And while we're here tonight, there's somebody that is going to be left behind, there's family members, there's brothers, sisters, that are going to ask the question, "Why? Why did they do it?" In 2016, I was in a dark place, a very, very dark place, and I took steps to end my life. Fortunately, I didn't commit suicide, but I was there. I was on the edge, looking over, and thinking to myself how lonely it was to be in that position, how I had nobody to turn to. I was a police officer at the time. We had a peer support group, but my peer support group did not reach out to me. Nobody cared. And fortunately, fortunately, I did not make that decision, even though the wheels were set in motion for some reason called a divine intervention, I didn't make the decision, the final decision. So when I tell you that I speak with passion and that I'm here for a reason, that is my reason, is to support the men and women who stand behind me tonight. So my heart is filled to have them sit behind me and watch this presentation and show their support for our group. I understand that we're going to go through a lot of numbers here, we're going to go through the proposal, it's a very lengthy proposal, I do understand that, but before I continue forward, I think it's important that you hear from two of our members, and they talk about their experiences as first responders and military vets, and they share their story. So if I could, if Chief Greg Demarest could come up, please.
My name is Greg Demarest, I am the chief of the Atawagun Fire District. I have been a member of two fire departments within this town since beginning in March of 2001. I started out with East Killonee FD and now with Atawagun since March of 2006. During my 24 years of service to this town and surrounding areas, through mutually agreements, I have been to dozens of motor vehicle accidents, structural fires, and medical calls that have unfortunately resulted in death to at least one person each time. For example, my very first call ever, when I was with East Killonee, was for a two-vehicle MVA with fire. We arrived shortly after to find a trailer truck versus a full-size van, with the van rolled over, both vehicles were fully involved in fire. Besides being scared from hearing the tires blow from excessive heat for the first time, the only thing I could concentrate on was the silhouette of the trailer truck driver burning inside the driver's seat. I was only 17. Another example, which is a little bit more scarring, a few days before Christmas 2009, us Atawagun were having our annual Santa Run. As we were about halfway through the run, I could hear my pager sounding over our sirens and air horns and Christmas music. It was for a one-car MVA versus tree with extrication needed. Because of the need for extrication, Davil Fire Department was started with us right away. Upon our arrival, we found a vehicle head-on into a large tree with severe front-end damage. We walked up, and we knew from the injuries to the patient that the patient was no longer with us. The hospital was called, and the patient was presumed deceased immediately due to their injuries. After the CSP conducted their investigation, we were allowed to remove the patient, which took over an hour to disentangle them from the vehicle with teams from both departments, working together with multiple extrication tools. I was personally tasked to assist the medical examiner with picking up small parts of the patient that were scattered throughout the yard and woods. Many parts were never found. There are many specific facts that I am leaving out of this story to protect the patient and the family for HIPAA purposes, but I assure you that for the past 16 years, they are still very fresh, as if it happened last week. There are dozens of memories that I am burdened by that, unfortunately, that have the same end result. For many years, we have been told by senior members and officers to just suck it up, kid, or it'll go away on its own with alcohol. Unfortunately, in the past, I was guilty of pushing that narrative, and to anyone who I've said that to, I am sorry, but I promise you, I'm not that way anymore. About a year ago, I noticed something wasn't quite right with my mental health, and I noticed I was taking out on everyone, including my friends, my wife, and ultimately, my two young daughters. I started talking to a coworker about his journey to get better after he had attempted suicide in 2023 due to similar problems he had due to firefighting in his time in the Iraq War. We had a lot of similar thoughts and problems day to day. He recommended a therapist who was very good with PTSD that is one hour away in old line. I started talking to her in July of last year and was diagnosed with accumulative PTSD in September. Thankfully, the conversation between my coworker and I happened at the right time. My will to live was shrinking daily. I will attest that the only reason I am still here today is because of my wife and my daughters. Neither of them had any idea what was going on with me, it was just daddy is having a rough day. I did have thoughts, but then I got to thinking about my daughters coming home from school and finding me. They don't deserve that, nobody does. My wife, nobody else's family deserves that. That would scar them for the rest of their life and wondering why I did what I did, and I have made far too many promises to them to do that. If I had a place to go, especially closer to home, I would be much further along my journey to recovery, long before any of those thoughts crept into my head. Having those resources in town, especially at no cost, will make a huge difference for anyone that is like me, and I can almost guarantee that there are dozens of members in this room, and if not throughout the area, that are like me. When I asked my therapist about going through workman's comp for this, she stated that the way the state has it set up is much like as if you broke your leg. And by that, she meant that you will be taken out of work for intense therapy sessions for months, or this is a end-of-career diagnosis for those that are about to retire anyway. The current way it is set up with workman's comp is not perfect for my specific situation because, as she stated it, PTSD is being found to be on a spectrum similar to autism. In my case, it's fair enough to garnish, you know, three months out of work or retirement. Even though it is bad, there is no one-size-fits-all way to go about it. Per the National Fallen Firefighters Foundation, an estimated 100 firefighters nationwide commit suicide per year at a rate of 18 per 100,000 firefighters. This town has approximately 230 members of emergency services between the fire departments, KBA ambulance, and the town of Killonee Police. Also, I am sure most of us have heard of 22 a day, which refers to the average amount of veterans that take their own life nationwide. In 2019 and 2023, there were 935 veterans living in Killonee. Statistically, between the approximately 1,165 firefighters, EMS personnel, police officers, and veterans, almost four of us will commit suicide this year. This number is far, far too high for me, and I hope it is for you as well. Please approve this grant, not for me, but for everyone else currently serving, the future generations of emergency services, and our town's veterans, because unfortunately, traumatic deaths and deaths will always be there. We will always be there to respond to your needs, but now we need saving too. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Joel Neiman, I'm the Veteran Service Coordinator at CT State Quinnbach Valley, and how I ended up doing this job was, I'm a post-9/11 veteran. When our country was attacked, I went right to the recruiter's office, right down the road here, and I joined the military. I joined the Army's 3rd Infantry Division, was in the 5th Army Bradley Fighting Vehicle over the border when we invaded Iraq. I was in the Audie Murphy squad. It was a life experience like I could never have imagined. Pretty crazy. So I was in Operation Chakka Na, Operation Thunder Run, and we took out a bunch of towns all the way up to Baghdad. And, you know, I wanted to do something for my country, I wanted to serve my country. I think that we live in this country, it's a free country, and I think the best way to do that was to serve my country in the military. When I got out of the military, it's the typical story, you know, I was drinking like a fish, I was self-medicating, very depressed, definitely had suicidal thoughts, knew exactly how I was going to do it. I would have been in full dress uniform, and it was a tough part of my life. I went to counseling at the VA, it wasn't very helpful. I felt like talking to a civilian doctor was just not sufficient, especially since that civilian doctor left me in a room by myself to ponder my thoughts for about 10 minutes because you couldn't take the story that I was telling her. That's when I decided I got to go back to school because we need veterans helping veterans. The best therapy I have gotten was by talking to my friends, keeping in contact with them, and, you know, talking about each other's feelings to each other. So I went to Quinnbach Valley Community College, I got my associate's degree, general studies, then I went to ECSU and got my bachelor's degree in psychology, and Anna Maria College, and got my master's degree in counseling psychology. And working at the school with all the veterans that I worked with is extraordinarily therapeutic for me, you know, and I try to help everybody that I can. And 22 a day is actually an underestimate for a number. Last year, 6,407 veterans took their own lives by suicide. And 4,865 died from drug overdoses, which is astronomical. The suicide rate in drug overdose for veteran females jumped 24.1% last year. These numbers are just staggering. In the state of Connecticut, every other day, a veteran dies from a drug overdose, and it's just in this state alone. I've had a lot of friends take their own lives. I have four sons serving in the military right now. One of my sons, who's in the Marine Corps, called me up crying because he just witnessed his team leader shoot himself in the head. I got in my car and I drove right to North Carolina, and I drove him back here to get therapy with EMDR from one of my friends. He's self-medicating. It breaks my heart. And I think, you know, the Quiet Corner Peer Support Group is a... Wyndham County in Connecticut desperately needs a program like this because all these first responders, the best people for them to talk to is each other. You can go to a civilian doctor, they're very helpful, but I think the most therapeutic remedy for dealing with PTSD or TBIs or anything like that, or alcohol addiction, drug addiction, is to, you know, talk to your friends, talk to folks that know what you're going through. So I think this is a great program that's going to be very beneficial to all the men and women that serve the community. Because without the men and women that serve this community, who do we have? Who do we turn to? Nobody. When your house is on fire, they're going to be there. If you get in a car accident, they're going to be there. They're an asset, they're friends, and we need to help them. Thank you very much.
There's something in our profession called walking wounded, and it's very clear here tonight, there's a lot of walking wounded that are in this room. And many of them wanted to speak, but for everybody's sake, we didn't want to throw too much at you all. But as a peer support group, we hear these stories often, and we wade through them and we try to help our first responders. So the question is, you know, why did we start this group? Well, back in December of last year, Mike Shabiness and I, both coming from, he came from Corrections, I came from the police world, we got together and we decided that there's really no mental health outlets up here, there's nothing up here for our first responders to lean on in a time of crisis. So we started piecing things together through a nonprofit. Many of you are probably familiar with this little four-legged creature that would have been here tonight but is at home resting with mom, but Hope, we were able to get Hope through the nonprofit, and she's a therapy canine in training, and she's very active in our community. We decided when we were building a peer support group that we wanted a multi-layered approach, multifaceted approach. It's not just a one-and-done, and you talk with a peer support member and you move on. Part of our group, we have people from all walks of life, we have first responders, police officers, ENTs, we have firefighters, we have chaplains, veterans, active military, medical doctors. We have people from all walks of life, there's approximately 30 people on the team and it's growing every day. We're getting phone calls, we're getting the support of the community, people are stepping forward and saying, "We want to help, how can we help?" Since the inception of the group back in December, we've had 15 callouts, 15 callouts for critical incidents. These are our responders suffering in our community and needing help, and we've responded to everyone. Now, I have to be very careful and tread lightly on this next topic, but I know that you want statistics to apply for the opioid funding, I understand that. But I understand too, we're locked in under Public Act 24-67, we have to be very, very careful on what we share. Because as peer support members, we're locked in under that public act, and we can't share personal information. If we did that, we'd break the confidentiality of what we do, and then when you don't have trust in our line of work, things don't go well. People don't come forward, and they don't ask for help. So knowing that, we've had 12 individuals that we have dealt with in a mental health crisis. Out of those 12 individuals, we had four that reported, or excuse me, three that reported in opioid substance use that was affecting their job performance. Now, in addition to that, we had nine that admitted to using alcohol and abusing alcohol as a way of self-medicating. That's a very scary number. We've only been around for a couple of months, and we're starting to see a trend that is following a national, national trend that's coming to the Quiet Corner. Not only are we having recruitment issues with the volunteer fire service, and calls are being dropped on a daily basis in this town, but members are disappearing, and you need to ask yourself, "Why? Why is this?" And I think we have the answer, it comes down to mental health and burnout. So our group is very passionate about this, we're going to go through some of the statistics. If you break it down for military, and I put it in the proposal, but if you break it down for military and first responders, when it comes to veterans, they're twice as likely to die from accidental opioid overdose, twice as likely. When you look at our first responders, when you look at our first responders, there was a recent study that was conducted, and it showed that 40% of first responders receiving mental health counseling tested positive for potential substance use. 40% in mental health services. Now, that's self-medicating behavior. So you have to ask your question, you know, "Why? Why is this? Why does this occur?" I mean, it comes down to long shifts, the trauma that we face, the uncertainty of what we face, life-or-death situations, I mean, it's cumulative. It's not, you can't really put your finger on one reason, but you can't put your finger on statistics. So really, when we... So, really, when we were forming the group, knowing a lot of this, and knowing that substance, you know, this plays into this, it does play into our way of, our vision, and our vision is to address the substance abuse issues in addition to the mental health. So, we have some core services that we offer, and these are services that are ongoing, that are free. We will never, as a nonprofit, as long as Mike and I run the nonprofit, we will never take insurance, we will never take a co-pay, we will never charge a first responder or military veteran for services. It's not gonna happen. And we look at it this way, we look at it as, when it comes down to paying that co-pay and someone decides, "Can I put food on my table, or am I gonna pay a co-pay for mental health services or addiction services?", what are they gonna pick? They're probably gonna pick putting food on their table. I would say 99 times out of 100, that's what the choice is gonna be. So, we are not interested in collecting co-pays or dealing with insurance companies, that's just not, not part of our mission, not part of our goals. So as far as our core services, clearly, we have peer support goals, we have, you know, groups, approximately 30 people on the team, we meet once a month, and we handle a gamut of different responses and dealing with different peers and different modes of crisis and many, many different things, okay? But we definitely handle the mental health part of it as the best we can, and if we can't handle it as a group, we outsource it. So we send them to, we have some clinicians that are volunteer, their time. We have one clinician that's an EMDR therapist that will, if I call them right now, he would come to Killingly. He would drop everything he's doing to come, he's that passionate, and he has. He's met with people on a Sunday at 9:00 at night. So, that's the difference, if you think about it, when you call your doctor for an appointment, how long does it take you to get in? Week, two weeks, three weeks? Maybe longer than the VA? I'm sure it's a long time for the VA. Whereas we're immediate, we respond as quickly as possible, and we get people help and we get results. So, as far as training and education, so here's where I wanna dive a bit deeper, and I didn't cover this in the subcommittee, I probably should've mentioned this, but in my former life as a police officer, I was what they call a drug recognition expert. I was one of the lead instructors for the state of Connecticut, I was one of the first four police officers to be trained in this. I went around, I sold this program, I taught this program all over New England, and I testified to the Connecticut Legislature about various substances and abuses of substances and how it's gonna affect our roadways. I was one of the highly trained individuals that would come into court as an expert and be able to tell the court, as an expert, what sort of drug category a person's on. So I used a lot of that training that I had, and I developed a program called Identifying Drug Impaired First Responders. And I highlight, I highlight one of the key areas of the program is opioid abuse, because you see it in the first responder world, and the dangers of it, and how to identify it, not only as a supervisor, but as a fellow peer. So that's one of the programs that we're gonna offer free to not only our peer support members, but also to local fire departments. So they'll have that option to be trained in opioid detection, drug detection. We're gonna talk about seven drug categories, but narcotic analgesics is definitely one of them. So we're gonna dive very deep into that. But that's something that does align with the public act for the opioid fund, is the education part. We're gonna talk about PTSD, we're gonna talk about suicide prevention, we're gonna talk about coping strategies, how to deal with high-stress environments, we're gonna talk about de-escalation training, how to deal with people who are impaired and how to de-escalate them. These are all programs that we're gonna do, that we've been doing since last October, but we're gonna do them more frequently with the funding provided through the opioid money. In addition to the core, core strategies or core parts of our group, we have acute stress adaptive protocol. We are very, very proud of this program. This is something we brought to Connecticut, they tried a few years back, it kinda fizzled out. But we are the first peer support group with 18 of our members trained in ASAP. So acute stress adaptive protocol, essentially what it is, it's very similar to EMDR, and it has a 44% reduction in PTSD symptomology if it's done within three days. So think about it here for a second, being PTSD, think about this, if you're reducing the symptoms, the person's more likely to not abuse substances, for instance opioids, not abuse those to self-medicate. So if we're out in the field doing this, and we're doing this within three days of a major event, think about the impact it's gonna have on our community. So right there, you're getting almost 50% of your responders back and a good headspace to press forward. Obviously, we're gonna do crisis support, so we're gonna do callouts, critical incidents, respond not to the scene, unless the incident commander wants us at the scene, we will respond back to the station and meet with the members, so we'll do debriefings right then and there. Our quickest response time was 15 minutes, 15 minutes from a phone call. The crisis team, three days, the one that comes out of New London, 15 minutes, we were Outreach and advocacy, we're very, we're very active in the community, you've probably seen our group around in the community, I know you've seen Hope walking around, but we're, that's one thing that we pride ourselves on as a group, is how active we're gonna be. We're gonna be doing charity events, we're gonna be doing fundraising events, we have a lot of events coming up, if you want, I can go through the list, but we have a lot of stuff coming up, a lot of positive activities where we're engaging the community, we're out there, we're showing support to our first responders and our military vets, we're just out there being seen. So one of the big things that I know that is a big-ticket item on the proposal that may have some confusion, so I wanna try to clear up some of that, is why space matters? Why do we need a place to bring our first responders and military veterans? Why not just do it in the firehouse? Well, I will tell you from doing this the last, what, five, six months, using a firehouse is not the best place. Think about it for a second, if you're suffering from a mental health crisis, and you're hearing the bells and whistles, and people are coming in and out of the door, smoking and joking and having a great time, and you're trying to get that help you need, and you're hearing that in the background, are you truly going to connect with that peer member? And really, the answer is no. So we do the best that we can, we function the best that we can now, but we're really doing a place to bring these folks, not only to deal with the traumas that they face, but to address those underlying issues, if there's substance abuse going on, getting them in touch with substance abuse counselors, having them meet in private so that their car's not parked out in front of the station, and everybody's going, "Why are they there? What's going on with John today?" So we want a private place to bring them. And here's the beautiful thing about our community, and a beautiful thing about what we're trying to do, is when we were looking for a space, and we're trying to figure this out, and we're going to different people that have this conversation, Mike Chivinas and his fiancee, Jessica O'Brien, they said, "Listen, we're gonna be developing a wedding venue further, we have this open space, how about we donate the space to the peer support group up on the second floor, it's approximately 70 by 30 space, we'll donate this for you. We're gonna be losing money." They acknowledged they're gonna be losing about $2,400 in rent a month, but they're willing to do this, and they're willing to do this not for personal gain, they're willing to do this because they're passionate about this mission, because they've been there with me, building this together. So they're very passionate about it. So, when it comes to the space over at Evergreen Farms, 204 Hartford Pike, it's not much of a space now, but it's gonna be. And it's gonna be something that this town can have a lot of pride in, in knowing that they helped build. And it's something that, we're gonna, we're gonna save some lives. We're not only gonna help people, but we're gonna save some lives there. There's no doubt in my mind, because I see what we're doing already, and I'm telling you, we're on a mission here. And right before this meeting, I got a text message from somebody that was struggling, and they were like, "Thank you." And I gotta tell you, I don't do it for the thank yous, I just do it to know that somebody is not in the darkness and trying to struggle to get out. And, you know, if we have this space and we can get it up and running sooner than later, I'm telling you, we're gonna do some great things. And as far as from the town perspective, if you're wondering, you know, will this bring revenue to the town? Here's the beautiful thing about this space, it's in Killingly, there's a hotel in Killingly, there's shopping in Killingly, we've already had a class, we had people from New York, Florida, come up to the Dable Firehouse to train this class, they went to Killingly Commons to eat, they stayed at the local hotel. We're gonna be running trainings out there all the time. So it's gonna help with our local businesses. So, let's get into the budget part. Now, I understand, again, I understand there's probably gonna be some questions, but I just kinda wanna highlight a couple things in the budget itself. So we have some operational expansion courses, costs, so you have to understand, with these costs, these are estimated costs, that we feel we need to really get this space up and running, we need help with a program coordinator, we need to do more training with our first responders, the training's quite expensive, we really need this funding to get things going here. And the first part of that is that acute stress adaptive protocol training, it's approximately $700 per student to get the first responder trained. So, it's not a lot of money, but when you're talking training, you know, additional members of the team, the way we're expanding, how busy we're getting, it's gonna start to add up very, very quickly. The second part to that is, and I broke down what the ASAP is in case you wanted a breakdown as to what it is, I won't go line by line, but it basically rolls down, rolls down what the training is and explains each part of it. As far as the facility costs, so we did sign a lease, we've had a lease since May, we plan on starting construction as soon as possible, and construction is going to be very labor-intensive. I did include in the proposal an in-kind letter from a local contractor, and I will tell you that there are other contractors that are willing to step up and help with labor cost, so we did factor that into the budget, and when we do go over the budget as part of this meeting, I'll have Evan come up to help me with it. But, we did, we did at least show you that there are veterans, there are folks in our community that are coming forward and saying they're willing to help us for free, which is, which is huge, and I mean, it definitely fills our heart with pride knowing that. But as far as the space, the plan is to have our classes there, to have a meeting space, to have therapy sessions there, to do yoga, informed trauma, to do whatever we can to help our responders get, and our veterans get in the right headspace. And we're constantly working on that mission, Stephen, we know what our foundation is, but we're gonna think out of the box as much as we can in that sense. So, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be an amazing place once it's up and running, about 2,400-ish square feet of space. As far as the program coordinator, and I know there were some questions last time, you know, what's the program coordinator gonna do? Both Mike and I and a lot of our teammates, we all work full-time jobs, we all have families, we all have fire department responsibilities, so if something goes on in town, we're usually there. So we have a lot of responsibilities, so having a program coordinator is really gonna help us stay organized, and it's gonna help us keep the mission moving forward. We anticipate as we get more publicity out there, as we get more members, more callouts, we're gonna get extremely busy. So, having a program coordinator, and we broke down kind of what the program coordinator's gonna do, is really gonna help us move forward and take this to the next level, because quite frankly, you know, we picked Killingly for a reason, we looked all over, but we picked Killingly because Mike and I are passionate about this town, we're both born and raised in this town, and we care very deeply about our community. So to have the Peer Support Wellness Center in our town is major for Mike and I. So, to do that, we need all these different working parts to it. So, you know, one of the things, you know, just kinda in closing, before, I'm sure you have a bunch of questions, but in closing, you know, we have the full support of all the Killingly Fire Departments, all the chiefs signed a letter of agreement, they're very passionate chiefs, they want this to succeed, they want a place to send their folks when they're struggling, and, you know, I think we have a bright future, I think, I think we're gonna, we're gonna change a lot of lives in our town. And not only that, I think we're gonna have a better response time, we're gonna get firefighters answering calls, because quite frankly, if you look at the pages coming out, there are a lot of departments that are dropping calls, and you have to ask yourself, "Why is that?" You know, if you call 911 and nobody shows up, that's a very bad day, right? So, I think that's something, we have an opportunity here to really stop that from happening and get firefighters back in the firehouse and responding to things, and keep our veterans safe, and so, thank you, and I'm sure you have questions, so.
Thank you. I wanna start with saying, thank you, Mr. McNeil, Mr. Neiman, and Chief Demarest for sharing your stories with us. Having family members who have served in the military, in law enforcement, and also EMS, who suffer from PTSD, I fully understand how important it is to talk. I know the more you talk about things, it's part of the healing process. So I appreciate you coming forward and sharing your stories with us, I know it's not easy to talk about stuff, especially in a room this big, in front of this many people. So again, I wanna thank you for that. I just do have one question. My vice chair just handed me paperwork which was not included in the agenda packets or posted on the agenda that was posted online. The information we got from you for the Quiet Corner Peer Support Group is the exact same documentation that we had received during fiscal subcommittee. Is there...
That is not in my box. This was the agenda packet in my box and what's posted.
Mr. Chairman, we have, we have a packet, it's the exact same one, I'm more than happy to share it with you. We printed out several of them for the... So we did, we did update it, Mr. Chairman, from last time we met, so we addressed some of the issues that were mentioned at the end of the meeting.
Now, did you submit this to the town to include?
I did. There was a young lady that had emailed me and asked me for the updated proposal, I sent it through email, and that was earlier in the week when she asked.
This week?
Yes.
Okay, that would explain why it didn't make it in our packet.
It was in the mailbox. Do you need it?
Yep, she's got the same one, I don't know where...
I pulled that out of the mailbox.
Do we need a Schrepper in the packet?
Well, my concern is if we're having stuff brought to us and it wasn't posted in the agenda on the packet or on the town website, and the other reason why I bring this up is, after fiscal subcommittee, some of the questions we had, I had reached, I had talked with the town manager, he had reached out to the town attorney, we did get feedback from the town attorney this morning, it was forwarded to me, we had sent it to the town manager last night. And I will read what it says before we go any further. There was a question over Public Act 24-67 and also 22-48, and this is from Rich Roberts, who's the town attorney, it says, "Good evening, first of all, you are correct that Public Act 24-67 confidentiality provisions apply to employer-established peer support groups, this is something that you had addressed earlier. My sense that the inquiry that the town is making is designed to obtain relative or aggregate numbers of individuals served rather than to obtain confidential information about any particular first responder. And the additional information you gave tonight about the number of three, that is something that we were looking for during fiscal subcommittee, I'm glad you were able to come forward with that number." Going on further, it says, "Having reviewed the original Public Act PA 24-48 and the materials that you provided, I was also unable to conclude definitively on whether or not the QCPS qualified for the opioid funds or not. I was also a bit confused that their $125,000 request was shown as an estimated annual cost, including the $75,000 for construction costs, which suggests to me that this is a reoccurring expense. I don't know if that was what was intended or not, and I don't know how much the town has in the opioid funds that it can distribute. It also struck me as problematic from a perception, perceptive, even if not from a legal one, that the $75,000 was going to be used for improvements to a facility owned and operated by one of the advocates for the donation. That may also create an IRS issue for them as well. While it clearly is a worthy cause, I don't have enough information to conclude that this is an eligible use of opioid funds, particularly the construction cost aspect. Please let us know if you have any other questions. Thanks very much." And that is from Rich Roberts, the town's attorney from Halloran and Sage.
We didn't do the town attorney.
So that is, now, I will say, during fiscal subcommittee, the three members of the fiscal subcommittee all spoke in support of this. And I won't get into my story, but I had shared my story with you as well. I think this is definitely a worthy cause, 100%. There was further discussion later in the fiscal subcommittee after you had left, one of the members of fiscal subcommittee, Hulati Barkley, indicated that she would rather, rather than giving any money to NDDH, she would rather give every penny we had in the opioid settlement to you guys, to your peer support group. But the one question we had was, we just wanted to make sure that, and as we had asked there, we asked for a little more information, as Andy had talked about, a little more of a detailed breakdown. And, I mean, it's, so that was, that letter was what we got back from the attorney, I got that this morning. So it was, that's where we're at on that. I did share that letter with all my other council members, just to make them...
When you walked in, so that's the same thing?
I printed it out, this is also from the attorney.
Do we need a break?
So this is an opinion from the attorney.
Do we need to take a ten minute recess or anything, anybody? Because he's got some information that he didn't see, Amy has some that she didn't see, you could do that.
No, we can go on, because I know where Jason's going with this. You made it very clear that you're not in favor of this, so...
Have you listened to the fiscal subcommittee?
I don't need to, because you have, your actions speak way louder than yours. I don't need to because you have, your actions speak way louder than yours.
I completely disagree with you. I do have a couple of questions. I, I appreciate you coming to do your presentation tonight. I, just for clarification purposes, the, with the fiscal subcommittee asking for more information, when you were at the fiscal subcommittee, did you get the impression that the fiscal subcommittee did not support your group?
I, I had some concerns, but I also on the same, Andy had brought up some information about the budget and I did agree with him on that, that there needed to be a defined budget, no problem. You know, as far as support, it, it felt genuine that there was support. But the concern was information coming back to us after the fact that made us question what kind of support we were actually getting and, and if we had buy-in from the town, quite frankly. And, you know, there were some concerns, some underlying accusations about the property and about the fact that this property was being donated. And I was a little upset about that because I felt we were being transparent from the beginning and that we've been transparent. I don't know how much more honest we, we could be with all of this. You basically had people come in front of you tonight and tell you their life story that has never been told publicly. And in addition to that, you know, we, I felt as though we hit every objective of the statute. I've read the statute. You know, I appreciate your turning weighing in, but quite frankly, you know, I'm a little offended that there would even be an accusation about the property. And I'm not even the property owner. But I'm actually kind of offended by that, to be, to be honest with you. Because, you know, I, I felt as though we came in, we opened up our heart to you, we told the truth. And now we're at an impasse here where there's questions about the property. So, so I really questioned the council and their support in our first responders and their support of, of people that give up their time for free to volunteer in this town. And now we're hung up about something that is, quite frankly, a little ridiculous, so.
I think, I think you're taking the attorney's advice incorrectly. I think what he's saying is if we move forward with this, with this money, that you could have an issue with the IRS. That's all he's saying. It's not implying that if you, if you take that, if you take this money and say you deducted off your taxes as a donation to the 501(c), that could, that could be, that could pose a problem. No, I'm just saying, this is, this is what he's telling you.
Yeah.
He's not telling you either way which, which way it goes. This is what he's telling you. Mr. Conover, what do we have for funds available? Do you know offhand? Is that for how many years?
That is, alright, that is, what, that, no, let me correct that. That is what's in the fund currently. We will be receiving money and there's no concrete answer for somewhere in the area of another eight to 10, and I've even heard the number thrown out recently. It could be 20 years. We don't know the exact number on how many more years we're going to receive it. We don't know how much we're going to receive a year. But that $160,000 number is what we actually have right now that we've already received from the fund. So that's what we have now that we could expend. I will say, Mr. McNeil, I, I, I'm not quite sure where you got the information that the council or the fiscal subcommittee did not support you or your organization. I stated, and I actually listened to the entire transcript again today, I stated five different times that I support you. And then towards the end of the meeting, about an hour in, one of, the only thing I said was I wanted to make sure the money goes towards eligible items, which is crucial when you're dealing with a grant. This, everything has to get reported to the state. And if we don't have the documentation to back it up, that puts us in a bad position because now we've spent, expended grant funds on something the state could have deemed ineligible. All I asked for during that meeting and, and I thought you understood was I was just asking for more information. The same thing Mr. Whitehead said. And unfortunately, you had left at the time, but as I said, as Barkley said, I would rather give them all the money we have in that, more than what they asked for. And, and that was, there was support from the fiscal subcommittee across the board, unanimous and for you. It was just a matter of we wanted some more information. Part of why I listened to the entire meeting again today, because one thing, I got a phone call about half hour, hour after I got home that night, asking me if I knew who owned that property. That's when I got informed that it was Chief Shabiness. I thought maybe I missed that during the presentation. During your presentation, during that whole evening, at no point did anyone say that Chief Shabiness, who's the vice president of your group, is the owner of the property. And, and you were saying that you were being clear and transparent. To me, that was, and maybe somebody thought they had mentioned it, but didn't. But again, like I said, I thought maybe I missed it. I went back and I listened to the entire thing today and, and that wasn't mentioned at all. I, and that was the only negative feedback that I received from anyone was, this looks a little weird because it's one of the officers of the organization that owns the property. And one thing that was, that was asked of me would be, what would happen if the $75,000 got invested in the property? And the peer support group dissolved at some point or needed a bigger place and moved away? What would happen at that point? Because then at that point, Chief Shabiness would have benefited from grant money by an increase in the value of his property. So that was a question that was posed to me. And that was a lot of why we went to the attorney for some clarification on that part. Because again, I would hate to see this go wrong. Like I said, fiscal subcommittee, we fully supported your presentation. We fully support your group. I, as I had brought up during that meeting, and I would strongly encourage you to include our law enforcement. And again, tonight, you, you had mentioned you have law enforcement on the group, but you didn't mention serving our law enforcement officers. Knowing how much they get impacted on a daily basis, they are first responders. I, going forward, I really encourage you to reach out to our law enforcement. You had stated during that meeting that police don't like to speak to outsiders. And you've got the experience as a police officer. You're not an outsider. You, you've been in their shoes. And, and I totally agree with what, what was said tonight about, it's easier to talk to someone that's been through what you've been through, that understands the things you face every single day. You're more apt to open up to that. They're going to highly understand what your struggles are, what you're battling, what you've experienced. And I, as I said, I fully support your group. The big thing for me is now that I'm seeing this other packet that we didn't get in our agendas, I don't, and right now, I don't know which version was given to the town attorney by town staff. I don't know if the town attorney looked over the version that's in our agenda or looked over the version that the vice chair just handed to me. So I would hate to go forward and, without getting clarification on that. I would, and especially considering what the town attorney said, I don't know if you, Chief Shabiness, if you've talked to a tax attorney regarding the lease. And that was, that was the other pieces I was going to seek clarification for, but you actually clarified that tonight. Because you would talk about lease during the meeting. And then a question was brought up to me is, well, how much are they paying rent? And I thought you would, somebody had said something about there being no charge, but I didn't remember and it took me a couple of days to get the actual audio clip of it. And it was mentioned later on that, because you had mentioned you signed a lease on May 1st and it was mentioned later on that there's no cost. So that was one thing I was going to ask a question for, but that was, I did clarify that by listening back over the meeting and I'm glad you stayed that tonight to clarify that. And I know there, there was a couple of things we had asked you about. But now that I'm seeing this packet, I went through and jotted notes down. I didn't see this, I didn't have a chance to review it. And as I said, the agenda that's posted on the town website isn't this packet that Tammy has. It's actually what is, what was presented to the fiscal subcommittee. Because I printed them both out, compared them side by side and they were the exact same thing, word for word. So, so that's, that, that's where I'm at on this. And I looked at Patty's packet, she has the same information I have. I don't know what everybody else has. I don't know if Tammy's the only one that came up, came down.
This is in my box tonight. I was in the box.
I grabbed my mail tonight and I didn't have that. I have this packet, so.
I have it.
Yeah, and so I don't know.
I want to say it's Tammy's, but I also want to say that that's happened to me before. I just miss a box.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, just so I understand, and I apologize, I, I wasn't trying to, you understand, we're very passionate about this, so, and, and clearly being the lightning rod of the group, me, you know, I'm the one that takes a lot of heat. So, I, I apologize, it's no disrespect to the council. You know, I know you all have an extremely tough job. I get it with grant work, my nine-to-five is with grant work, so I completely understand what you're talking about and I understand with the state audit, you definitely don't want to be the one. So, but let me, let me propose this to you and, and this is just a thought that was running through my mind. Is, really what's holding this up for moving forward is the building, correct?
That and just clarification from our attorney that it's eligible.
Okay, so essentially that's, so, hypothetically, if we were to take that fund request and move it into a training budget, because right now the fire departments, the training budgets are not that great in this town and they don't have a lot of money. And we try to do as much free training as we can, but again, it's, it's costly. We, we try to figure out how to, how to fund it. If we were to move that, the funds into a training budget, per se. In addition to that, out of that fund, we were to fund a, a vehicle for, for Hope that would not only keep her safe, but would help response times and, and that sort of thing. Would that be something that could work? If we, if we took the building out of the equation and, and we looked at those two facets? So we looked at the building, we looked at our vehicle, and we looked at the training budget. It took 75 and just combined it for like, let's say like two hours. Would that work for, for the committee? Would there be less, less concern?
That is, that is one thing I was actually going to make a recommendation on. Because I know when we spoke during fiscal subcommittee, Mr. Whitehead asked if $125,000 was going to be enough. Because he felt it seemed a little, a little low to where startup for this was going to be higher. And that was kind of where I was thinking, that this past week I've been thinking about is, and I stated this, I told this to Tammy Wakefield last week, that if you guys came through with a number at like 225 and we gave you 150 and the 75 for their renovations was a separate thing, I think that would clear this up a lot. And I, I was right on board with what Ula said. I would rather see your support group get every penny that we have in that opioid fund. I just want to make sure that we're doing everything the right way, that we don't have something come back on either the town or come back on your support group. It's, and like I said, I mean, this is, considering my family members that have dealt with PTSD, been serving in law enforcement and my dad was in Vietnam and he's still to this day struggles. And, and knowing the need for support for EMS, for our veterans and for our law enforcement. As I said that night, I think this is a phenomenal program and I fully support it. I, I would definitely encourage you to work with the finance director from town. I know it's been mentioned also that there's a possibility of applying directly to the state for opioid funding. That would be another avenue to go as well. I know NDDH had told the fiscal subcommittee that they want to work to help you guys as well, any way that they can. So I would definitely, I don't know if Luigi has reached out to you yet, but I, I would definitely reach out to him and, and see what capacity that they can help you as well. And, and as Andy had talked about, reach out to the surrounding towns. Because you've talked about your, this is your headquarters, this is your local, your, your local home. But the long-term plan is to reach out to other communities as well, to support surrounding communities, EMS as well. And as Andy said, reach out to surrounding towns. If this, if this definitely is something that's eligible for opioid funding, there are other towns out there that receive just a small amount of opioid funding. I heard about one town that received $1,900. And towns that are receiving smaller amounts are struggling to find ways to spend the money. So I would reach out to the local towns, local towns as well, surrounding towns, that you're going to be able to help and see what kind of funding you can get from them. And, I mean, I mean, like I said, I mean, it's, I, I know the fiscal subcommittee fully supported you and.
Mr. Chair, the way the motion is actually written is allocating the 125 and it would only be dispersed to what was allowed under opioid ordinance. So the motion, the way it is written, we could award them the 125 and when they submit for reimbursement, if, if it applies to the opioid. And, and I mean, if we're training in opioid recognition, if by first, and by the way, first responders also include policemen. It's not just firemen or EMS or veterans or any of that, or medics. So, the way, the way, and I actually sat down with the finance director and she helped me write this. So it would be allowed for us to be able to award them the 125. Because if they've got that guarantee, then they can move forward. They can start making their plans and yeah, they're going to be reaching out. There's, there's nobody else in this country doing this with their first responders. Free, free, enter, free help. No judgment.
No red tape.
No red tape. It's often a quiet secluded, which, I mean, Evergreen Farms is, back there is just so peaceful. There's no alarms. There's all sorts of stuff that if people, people are driving down there, they could be going, they, they, nobody's going to think that they're going down there to get help. It's, it's, it's a perfect location. I wish we could give them a piece of land somewhere that was off in the woods because the, there's just something about living here in the green. Just something's healing about being able to sit and listen to nature. These, I just don't, I just don't understand. I just.
I, can I just respond to her comment really quick? I will say, you talked about reimbursement. Part of the public act is the funding cannot be used to reimburse any expenditure.
Well, they, they would put forward a plan.
So she misspoke, but you know what she meant.
It's like, it's like on their budget where it's an annual cost. That technically, the startup cost is what she said.
So Chair, just to be clear, what you're saying, you're asking them to reach out to additional towns with the support of Killingly, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I think I had long conversations with, with Evan and I think it would behoove you to, and I think you take it all wrong. You say people aren't, aren't interested and aren't for this and you're dead wrong. But there is proper protocol that has to be followed. That would help you immensely. Like if you, if you came up with what you're thinking for revenue generating, you're going to do classes, you could charge new classes, you could do this, you could do that. All this, all this part of a business plan would help. If you're talking about having, even if you didn't have that car for the, for the K9, you still need fuel, steam and transportation. You still need insurance, you, you know, you, you covered the lease. Heat, hot water, liability insurance, you know what I mean? I mean, that's, that's all part of a business plan. If you put that all together and put all your numbers to it, you, you. I, I 100% support you, but it's, it's, it's showing due diligence in a business plan. Because you, you're talking, you're giving every, you're, you're giving everything away for free, which is amazing, but you also have to sustain yourself. If you don't sustain yourself, you can never give it away for free. So I think, I think if you put that in there and then go to these towns, you know, because you have Killingly support, you can start with that. You go to these towns and now you have, now you have a business plan and you can show them, bam, 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 this is, this is what we're doing, this is what it's going to cost, this is what it's going to have, like you, like your presentation tonight. And you go to these towns, it, it's going to be an easy buy-on. It's, it's a hard buy-on when you, when you, you know, I like, I like what you did with the, with the partial budget, but it's a hard buy-on with the original budget with just three numbers. It's a, it's a hard sell.
Is the one you have in front of you is the one that I sent Monday, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the one that was sent Monday.
Right, but it's, it's, all due respect, it's, it's still general, you know what I mean? It's still general. Like I told Evan, I would gladly help you to put something together, throw it to you and you can do whatever you want with it, but it's, it's, it's going to help you, it's going to benefit the cost. Because if you show people everything that you have and everything that you need. that you have, and everything that you need, how could they not buy in, I mean, we're, we're, we're buying in with just three numbers, can you imagine if it was a, a complete and comprehensive building, a business plan, because it's a business, no matter how you slice it, it's a business.
Frankly, Mr. Whitehead, unless we vote to move the one hundred and twenty-five towards for them to be able to use, then Killenley, they don't have Killenley support, instead if we don't act on the motion that is in the business, then they do not have Killenley support.
I understand it, but I'm just...
I know, I know what you're saying, yes, but let me tell you something, if you've spent some time sitting and talking with them, they've got a plan, they do have a plan.
What are you going to do when somebody sues you, God forbid?
I, I know we've got to have that plan, and I had to reach out to Jay from Girardi, he's going to come up with some nonprofit insurance, in the end, I do understand business, I'm running a business right now, so, in that area, it was all long-term storage, so, we're making a hundred dollars a pop each spot, and then we have that gentleman out there, Kevin, who rented below me, when I came up with this plan, I asked everyone to move out, so I instantly took a twenty-four hundred dollar pay cut a month, twenty-eight thousand dollars a year, so I know about business, I know about losses, this is so important, I'm not going to let it fail, there's no way, so if it comes up to an eight hundred dollar premium the next year, and we don't have it, I guess it's coming out of my pocket, because I'm sorry, it's too important, too many a day are being lost, in the end, what is a human life worth, I don't care, I'm going to step up and ask any one of my members, I'm going to step up, it's just who I am, we're going to do Rock the Bands in November, we're going to make money there, we got veterans stepping up to do fundraisers, Black Palm Brewery's stepping up, they're saying, hey, what do you need, let's do some more fundraising for you, but in the end, if every dollar runs out, and somebody calls his peer support group, we're showing up, and I tell you one thing, like, there's only one meter down that building, so if we can't help out with the electric bill, guess what, the lights are staying on, because it's just that important, Jessica literally is probably the most wonderful woman ever, she really wanted to expand her business, and I walk into her in December and say, hey, this is what I'd like to do, without hesitation, she's like, let's do it, so yeah, there's, there's these moving parts, what I say as committee, have a little faith and trust in it, let's make history, let's do this, let's get it done, let's look forward and have some faith in this, I did talk to my tax accountant, it is fine for what we're doing, because we're taking zero dollars, the only way Jessica's allowed out of the lease is if I pass away, and this license is not become a for-profit group, where it loses focus, it loses motive to do things the right way at no cost, then she has the right to say, hey, here's one year, you're not doing as what was planned, move out, that's the only way out, there's no end of the lease even, and it's a hundred percent free, so, all it takes is two human, three human beings, one phone call, they show up there, and there's no labor charge, we're going to sit there, what's a cup of coffee cost, and then, we have to call our EMDR guy, what's it called, it's a phone call, hey, you out of gas, take my gas card, here you go, put some gas in your car, that's the way, and I understand, that's rare nowadays in this country, that is rare, but the whole point of this is we want to be different, we want to make sure that when that person calls us, they know they're getting people that have, that care, they're going to take their time to show up, they're not going to, my, I have a family member that literally served in Afghanistan, he has survivor guilt, he made a phone call, the first question out of the person, why'd you wait so long? He hung up on him, his mother called me desperate, what did they just do, that's got to end, we keep hearing the statistics, and we keep pushing out, because nobody has faith and trust in the Lord, so that's what I'm asking this board, have a little faith and trust, we're all in the same community together, we're not going to steal this money, we're not going to sit in front of some lawyer who's going, oops, we're going to get this done, and we're going to get it done as a community, to make sure that everybody sitting behind me matters, and that's all I can say. Thank you.
So I'm, so I, I am very in favor of it, but I'm a little bit confused at this point of if it's legal or not, like, what we're going over again, I'm confused a little bit about your suggestion, Tammy, like, they just, if we change the wording, then it would automatically be wording like for a training instead of for the building, like, I'm just a little bit confused about the legality.
I was just thinking of the fly, because I was wondering if the building is the major hurdle here.
Because what's not included in here, because I've had a chance to sit down and talk to Kevin, every fire department, it would cost them seven hundred dollars, every individual, and there's six departments, they keep, I mean, seven hundred dollars, that's seven hundred dollars of potential taxpayer dollars that would have to go to train an individual, so that they can make sure their, their department's safe, I said, well, what if, do you think that there'd be ten people in, in every single department, in Killenley, in every Killenley department, that would be one, well, that would be seven thousand dollars a department, that would be, times six is forty-two thousand dollars, I know the town, our K-9 car was being retired, we would be going to, you know, be up for resale value or whatever, which they could, they could take, they could get it at a reduced cost, because, I mean, it's not going to be used like our police car is, hopes, hopefully not going to have to make that money, take, we're not going to have to take Oprah out, but it would secure her at the scenes, right, you know, if, if she had to go into the car to be, you know, if it got a little crazy and stuff.
Yeah, but so where I'm confused, Tammy, is then what would happen to this program?
Nothing would happen to the program, it would be...
But we want the program, so that's why I'm confused.
The seventy-five thousand that's, that was in there with the building, that's been a hangup, so rather than allowing the seventy-five thousand of that one twenty-five request be for the building, be it for training our men and women in our departments, and that actually be throwing ten people from KB ambulance, now, now you're up to almost fifty thousand dollars, plus the cost of a car.
So how are we going to do the building then, are you going to shift money around?
They wouldn't get donations from outside, it wouldn't be part of the opioid funding, it would be shifted to cost resources within the one hundred and twenty-five that are covered by the public act.
That is, the program is teach, is, is the education...
Without the building, I'd rather see the building. That's why I don't want to see the change.
See, right, right now, though...
I think I can answer that, so, yeah, no, I agree with you, the, the building is one of the key elements to this, right now, the training part, because we're doing training, it's at a local fire department, so that can be challenging at times, getting the space, because it's reserved for other things, and moving things around to do that, and it's, it's loud there, the bells and whistles, so, we, we do still do the training, but having a space to do it would be amazing, and then, really, the spaces to take the first responder out of the military, but it is quite a place where they can actually get their therapy ASAP and all that stuff, so.
Well, I guess, so my thoughts on it, I'm in support, I don't know what it would take to just change a few words or whatever, but I'd rather see the building than see it go to something else, like, I'd rather see the program really happen, and I will say, I don't want to, my friend was a participant in the program in Worcester, and her closest friends are termite, and they're mandated, and it might cost, and it might be different, and in terms of budget, you know, what the school does, is they reflect some cost for each one, because you don't want to charge, and then they just say that's from the grant, so you can, you know, when you go forward eventually, but, you know, she did the camp, and they were mandated to do the camp like every five years or something, and they stayed, you slept, slept there, it was like a two-way thing, so, I, I'm for it, I'd just like really to see it done legal, and the words reflect this program, like, because I like this program, I don't want to see it changed, me personally.
Thank you, I know you've mentioned, oh, go ahead.
I'm just going to say, I agree with Michelle and Andy, that, I mean, a leap of faith, yes, but we can't just, can, you know, it has to comply with the opioid settlement money, and we have to make sure that there is a plan written down, and where the money is going to go, how can we fix it, like, what would we need to make this legal to make the program work, does anybody, how can we do that?
So, the one thing I will say, is I know it's been brought up, that, that the building is the hangup, for me, the fact that the lawyer said that he couldn't conclude whether this qualified for the opioid fund or not, based on the document that was in the agenda, well, it was either the one that was in the agenda, or it was the one with more information that wasn't in the, that apparently was in some council members' packets, but it was not posted online where the public could see, so that, that being said, to me, it's not just the building, it's just ma, it's making sure that this qualifies for it, one thing I would say, is as, as I was going through, listening to everything today, I actually came up with a couple ways to apply this more towards the opioid settlement fund, to kind of concrete that, one thing you would never talk about, and, and I talked to someone who was in EMS, and you never mentioned the impact on EMS or the police when they're going to a call for an overdose, that, that is one way to tie this in too, because that's impacting, so it's, it's not just from the side of prevention from what they've been exposed to in the PTSD, but also the PTSD that can be caused directly from responding to an overdose, which could be tied to opioids, I think that would be another thing to add into this, that would further cement this being eligible for the opioid funding, another thing I thought about too, you would mention co-pays, how you don't want any of the members to get disturbed from having co-pays, my recommendation would be, create a fund to cover co-pays, so that way, they're, they don't have to worry about, I'm going to get hit with a thirty-five dollar, forty, fifty dollar co-pay, I think that would be a great way to, just another tool to use, another tool for, for you to have in your toolbox that you can, you can help people with, and I know, I, I, like I said, I do fully support this, one hundred percent, my, one thing I want to make sure of is that we're doing it right, and nothing can come back on you, or nothing can come back on the town, I'll be honest, my opinion, I would never vote against this, I would consider asking you for, as was brought up at fiscal subcommittee, a more detailed line-by-line breakdown, add more things, and you talked about training, put the training in there, what, an explanation as to how that training can get tied to the opioid funds, and, in my opinion, I would rather give you every single penny that's in that opioid trust, the opioid funds we have, than to give it to NDDH or another outside agency, because I know how important what you're doing is.
Can we, I don't know if we can, per recall do it, but since we want to give the leap of faith, and we want to do this correctly, is there any way that we could put our attorney together with these guys, and develop a plan that understands what you're doing is what you're doing, right, but to make, to hit all the checks and balances?
I think that would, I think that could be a conflict of interest, because attorney represents us.
Yeah.
I'm sure, I'm sure they've probably consulted with, I mean, to set up a 501(c)(3) is not exactly easy to do.
But I mean, he's going to be looking out for us as well, and there, there's going to be an extension of us, basically.
And that's why I sat down with the finance director and wrote that motion, but she knows how to word it, so that it would cover the town, that whatever was submitted as part of the public act, and she writes plenty of motions on how, and she, you know, she's pretty good about keeping track of grant funding, she helped me write the, the motion, so that it would be allowable, whatever gets submitted to us has to meet the public act.
Would we be possible to give it to Jen, is it Jen, or is that...
Well, the thing I would say is, right now, we're still in the presentation, this is also going to come back up under new business, and at that point, we could...
Then we can allow NDDH to do theirs, there, because you did get one of these, this was on the table, so. Could I just ask, so, the present, thank you.
What's that, I'm sorry.
Could I just ask you, so you did talk to your attorney about this?
What about the taxes, but about meeting the act?
I'm sorry?
About meeting the act?
Meeting the act, we just went through it, I was just not talking to that, and just made sure we hit line by line, I worked for the state twenty and a half years, I taught in corrections too, so, a lot of it is, they're going to, they're going to support the right kind of stuff in the end, we know our state, when you do the right things, they're going to support this stuff, especially when you start bringing people into a neutral area, like, I would love to put it somewhere on three or five acres, and, and have a retreat for people, oh my God, I'd give anything to have a half a million dollars right now and buy six twelve Cook Hill, I, I had a half million, buy it, put a retreat right there, call it a day, right, we just don't have that right now, it's all a building process, and getting them into a quiet area where I can have a wedding still going on, right, on the one side, they're going to be on the other side, they can kind of come up, hey, I need some help, maybe now that we just walk them right down, they're just walking right down like there's nothing, I talked to my accountant that does all my taxes every year, there's no, there is no issue there, you know, because we're a 501(c)(3), if I have to, if it'll make this committee better, I'll resign as the vice president of Quiet Corner Peer Support Group, I really don't want to, because I love this, but if that satisfies it out, and you want me to resign, I'll resign.
I don't think it's a matter of that, I think it's just a matter of if, if we can somehow collaborate and get the, and get the state on board, and, I mean, is there nobody at the state that we can talk to, or, yeah, I'm just saying.
You did say the state.
Yeah, I know.
So, I, I will ask this question, I know the question came up during fiscal subcommittee, and Kevin and I asked you if you'd read through public act 2248, your response was, you briefly looked at it and glanced over it, later in the meeting, when we're tabling the item, my recommendation was that we do more research to make sure that this is eligible for the grant funding, have you, and also, the acting town manager had given you a website, virtualstrategies.org, that has information about the opioid seven fund, did you have time since fiscal subcommittee to read through the public act, or look at that information, that what you told me about?
Yes, I did, in fact, when I was preparing the, the proposal that was submitted Monday, I made sure to mine with it as best I could, and, you know, really, it comes down to four areas, treatment, harm reduction, prevention, and recovery support, which I feel as though what I presented tonight clearly articulates those four areas, I don't really know how much deeper we need to go in, into that sense, I feel as though we, we correctly addressed this, the public act, I don't, I don't know what else, I mean, I don't know what else we, we can present, I mean, it's very clear.
I have a question, Jason, so, my understanding is if we funded it, and then they decided it wasn't, and we beat on the hook, and it's one twenty-five, and it's a one-time shot, right, like, it'd be a one-time penalty, like, we're not going to, same with five years in, and we're not going to owe five hundred thousand dollars, it'd be a one-time slap on the list, if we have to pay it back, right?
I would say that would be a question for the finance director.
Okay, so wait, she's coming in later, and, you know, take the leap of faith, and even if we get slapped, you know, one twenty-five, and then say sorry next year, you know, or at least take it to the people, we take that and say sorry, but, all right, let's see what Jen's got.
I do have one question for Mr. Conroy, do you know, in your emails back and forth with the town attorney, do you know which copy of the document you received, is it the one in the agenda, or is it this other one that Tammy and her male... Okay, so it was that one, so the town attorney has never seen this one, so we don't have an opinion on that document?
And it wasn't just Tammy, because they also got it.
But it also wasn't posted to the public, because that one is not on the town's website But it also wasn't posted to the public, because that one is not on the town's website or the agenda?
They did what you asked, they revised it.
No, actually, what was asked was, that it get revised and come back to fiscal subcommittee?
And so as a town counselor, and as well as two other counselors, I have the right to ask and forward a motion. And that's when I sat down with the finance director, and put together the motion that would allow them to be able to, us to assign the 125 to them, because that opioid money's been sitting there for over a year, and we have people dying, it's been spoken about people dying, because of opioids, and we're sitting on a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars that could be put to use to train and prevent death. Ultimately, what is the cost of a life? So.
I agree.
Let's not drag our feet, and let's help these guys out. Because they can't go to other towns and say, Killenley's got our back, if we don't.
Any more comments, questions? Do you have anything further for us?
Uh, no, just thank you, thank you for your time.
So I just, I, I'm probably, I get in trouble anyway. So, do you want to require him to be right, or to help our first responders, you know, get treated? But, 'cause I'm, 'cause I'm a little concerned. Because I know, I read that act, and I went through every page. And what they are doing meets the criteria beyond, beyond. So I don't understand the hangup.
Well, let me.
I just want to say, I think objection, like, with our chair, character consistently getting attacked tonight, we're allowed to have differences of opinion, we're allowed to believe, believe in legalities, I appreciate Jared, Jason's thoroughness, so, uh, disagreement, I feel it's acceptable, I, I don't really feel it's acceptable, the way that we've been attacking Jason's, uh, character tonight.
I agree a hundred percent, I mean, we're only, anything we do, we, we contact our attorney, just to make sure it's correct. That's the prudent thing to do.
And that's the beauty of America, we all get an opinion.
I, I would like to ask that, that if you had been at the fiscal subcommittee to the end, for all the discussion, or had listened to the, uh, audio clip of the fiscal subcommittee that I sent you, in the end of it, you would hear our finance director, and the acting town manager state that they didn't feel they could say this meets the opioid settlement. So that is guidance we received from town staff, this is guidance we received from the town attorney.
Did you read the public act?
I did.
Okay, and how can you say that it doesn't meet it?
Show me where in the public act it's seventy-five thousand dollars worth of renovations to a building.
They can get those donations elsewhere. Michelle made a great point, like, if, if that is the sticking point, the seventy-five thousand dollars for Chief Chavina's bit, um, property, then they are going to have support from all over New England, I guarantee it, if not further. If they can take that seventy-five thousand for the renovations out of this, show me where it doesn't need that. So it would still get done, but it would come from other funding sources besides the opioid money. Would you vote to put this through tonight, if they could, you know, state that they would do that? If that's the sticking point, because I don't understand what else it could be.
The question would be, the other seventy-five thousand dollars, that what are they putting it to? And does that fall underneath the requirements for the opioid, for the public act, 2248?
Additional training, they talked about Hope, and the town, I know it's been stated before about even donating, you know, the K nine.
Retired.
Retired, um, vehicle to them, so that would be a monetary value towards this.
I think it could be accurate too, that the building itself would be the support, because it's quiet, and it's not bells, and whistles, and things that are constant reminders. I mean, so I'm not sure even that the building would, and neither is the lawyer, honestly. I, I'm curious as to what Jen has to say when she goes out, like, why she, uh, worded it different, sounds like at the beginning, she thought it didn't meet, and then maybe she worded it differently, so let's.
Any further conversation, uh, conversation questions? Want to thank you both.
Would it hurt you guys just to put together that, another quick plan stating that? You know what I mean, you're gonna use it, additional, blah, 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 so it meets all the standards, and there's no question, and the attorney can sign off on it, and away we go.
Would it be another month or so before we started, because I mean, we're trying to move on this, and I think the longer we wait, it's.
I, I would be in favor of scheduling a, a special meeting a week from now. I, I know how important this is, and I, as much as I hate to extend, you're starting this up, or, or expanding this further, out any, I also want to make sure that we're doing everything the right way, and I would, I'd be in favor of calling for a special.
I mean, you know, we want to give you the money, we just, some people disagree, we just want to do it with an okay.
And, and I would love to see a request for the full amount. If, if you can come up with documentation that would, um, necessitate that, that you would have uses for the hundred and sixty-six, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, minus, if you can take the seventy-five thousand for the building out, and come forward with a request for the other, for the, for the full amount, rather than just the 125. I honestly think we would get full support of everyone on this council.
Autumn, Mr. Chair, I'd rather see it go to you guys.
No, Kevin, there's public comment, sorry, that's okay.
And this, honestly, this is a reaction, like, I am here, it's what Jen has to say, about why she thinks it is now. And, uh, didn't we do something before with a retroactive agreement, like, we did the money conditional on, we get the other budget, or something? I thought we did that with the ambulance at one point. Uh, we signed, we said, yes, we're gonna, we're gonna sign on the letter as long as we get this, we did the action with our, and they were gonna retroactively get us something.
Well, why don't, why don't, well.
Yeah, that one, that was a letter of support, that wasn't expenditure.
Why don't, why don't we change, why don't we change the motion?
Well, right now, we don't have a motion yet, that's.
No, I'm just, it's kind of, I say it here, it would, it would be beneficial. And what is, what is, what is our, uh, what is our limit, what do we have?
Uh, I believe it was a hun- we can get that from the finance director.
One sixty-six.
Yeah, it was one sixty-six.
Yeah, we can get. So why don't we change the motion?
We have to do that when we get to the motion.
And we also have another presentation. It's more in-depth than what you got, the other.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, again, thank you, um, thank you everyone who spoke. Next item up on the agenda is a, um, six E, presentation by Luigi Suttori, from Northeast District Department of Health regarding opioid settlement fund request.
But you are an R register nurse.
Yeah, um, hi, my name is Janine Vos, I'm the public health nurse over at Northeast District Department of Health, I'm here representing NDDH. Um, we had put together a proposal for the. Um, we had put together a proposal for, um, forty thousand dollars of the opioid funds. I did hand out today, um, I believe you got a proposal previous time with the, um, subcommittee about the details of what we were planning on doing with the funding. And just to, to kind of emphasize that, I put together just some real quick numbers on the top, um, with a work plan to follow after approval of the funding regarding hiring a part-time program specialist to run the opioid, um, activities in our community. The plan, um, is to form a coalition amongst the community, Killenley included, along with all the other towns that are funding this, um, to come up with a plan, education, prevention services, um, needle exchange, needle drop boxes, um, and Narcan distribution, um, in our community. Uh, it's a well-needed item, um, you know, it, some of the paperwork I also handed out was showing statistics of what opioids look like in Connecticut. Luckily, we have had a decrease of opioid overdoses in our community, in Connecticut in general, but, um, you know, more work needs to be done in our community. We see, um, the, um, overdoses on a daily basis. Um, I also am a emergency room nurse in our local ER at Cleveland Hospital, and I've worked there for over twenty years. I'm also a local community firefighter with the county fire department, and I know most of these guys back here well. Um, and, and firsthand have gone to a lot of overdoses, and the stigma, and, um, in our community regarding that. It needs to be addressed, and I think that NDDH is a, a great organization to, um, bring the community together at a large. Um, we've worked in opioids in the past, twenty nineteen, we put together a smaller opioid, um, campaign, where we had, uh, different organizations like CERAC, and Hidden in Plain Sight, for parents to understand, and try and, um, reduce the stigma about, um, opioids in our community, because it's, it's not just that guy on the side of the road that has issues, it's, you know, people we love and care about. And, and to educate our community, and help the people that really need it, and hopefully help the people before they need it, um, to continue with, um, education and everything. Um, so, I, like I said, I didn't, um, have, uh, a lot of the budget items, I just put that on the top, that has the, uh, part-time specialist that's going to be working, um, under me, and be supervising the program, uh, but they are gonna put together the coalition that will have the, um, representatives from towns, we're hoping to get folks from the schools, to have a good, um, overview, uh, variety of, uh, folks. Um, I have agreements with CERAC, uh, to do Narcan education in the community, which we've done in the past. Uh, we did Save a Life Day, April first, a couple of years in a row, where we educate the community about how to use Narcan, um, and distribute that in the area. And so looking to get a large group of people that are varied in the community, and, um, that will cover, uh, everybody else. Our first responders, themselves included, are a very important part of our community, but I'd like to cover more of our community, um, in, in the hopes of education and, um, prevention services, and, uh, maybe some harm reduction services in our area, which is also few and far between around here. We, um, had a needle exchange group that was coming to our area two times a month, um, out of Romantic. Um, that company, uh, PPI, they're not in our region anymore, um, I think they've actually closed, so we don't have those services like we did, um, a few years ago. I, I didn't have a lot to share, um, I know we've already been here for a, a long night, so, um, any questions that I can answer?
This sounds, um, different than what Luigi presented to us at the fiscal subcommittee. He said that this program was going to be targeting, um, youth?
Well, I mean, part of, part of that community is going to be the youth, um, with the prevention services, um, but in whole, um, with, i- if you look at the proposal, um, it has a lot to do with, uh, the Narcan, um, training and drop boxes, but definitely, uh, the youth will be involved in it, but as a community in whole, we're hoping to involve more than just the youth.
He also said that there was one and a half physicians that were eliminated from, um, Northeast District Health, and he was using the, um, the, um, revenue from that to pay for the, um, education specialist?
Yeah, part of the, um, physicians, uh, that were eliminated, uh, will be, will be towards this funding, uh, towards this program, um, but we're hoping that this will help kickstart it, and, uh, add to it, and keep it, have, it's like more of a longevity item, so that we can keep it in the community longer.
I also asked about, um, the per capita, um, for the NDDH, NDDH funding, and he said that it was not part of the per capita, but if you're using, um, the position that was eliminated to fund that, isn't that using the per capita money?
Uh, well, I, I can't speak to the per capita, I'm only here to speak about this position, um, but for what we're planning is something that is already budgeted in, um, so that it shouldn't affect the per capita. And then, moving on, we're hoping to, uh, continue this with our partners in the community, uh, like CERAC, um, and Hope Alliance, um, and make those strong connections, so that we can continue it without any change.
Hi, Janine, thank you for coming tonight. Um, I just have a question, can you explain the Dropbox, um, what that's all about? I know a lot of people listening probably don't understand.
Right, so, a Dropbox would be a place, like, they have the drug take-back day with the, um, at the police station, a place where you can drop either, um, narcotics, or like, that you don't need anymore, um, like, narcotics, or whatever, um, or needles, things like that, that are, you know, you don't want to keep in your house anymore.
So where would those be, like, would that be at NDDH, inside the building?
I think, I haven't really, like, put a map together, but local places where we could, maybe you can, can find them, maybe, you know, a library, or where we identify, that would be a, you know, a safe place. But definitely, NDDH, maybe the police station, but we want to keep it kind of at a broad, so that, say you do have something you want to drop off, and, and you feel, um, stigmatized by having stuff like that, a safe place that's gonna be private for you to be able to drop it and go.
Thank you, now you stated that, uh, this position was already budgeted for. Have you reviewed Public Act 2248 that, um, is pertinent to the opioid funding?
Yes.
One thing I, I found, and it's a guide for community advocates on the opioid settlement, um, this is from White Strategies, no, basically, in a sense, you can't supplant any funding, um, it has to be something new. This may be something you may want to look into, because if it's something that's already budgeted for, I don't know if that would be eligible then for the opioid funding.
Uh, so, the, what it's budgeted is, the, the first few years of this position will be funded by opioids, and then, moving on, our, uh, program specialist will also, um, as the funds run out, delve into other things like FOLI, um, and other, uh, different objectives at the health department.
So this isn't in the budget, or it is?
It's, it's a position that's budgeted for in the future.
A lot of your physicians at the health department are grant-funded, correct? And that's how you base, when you put together a program, you, you're just going to go and get the grants?
Right, yeah, a, a lot of the physicians that were already eliminated were grant-funded physicians, so this is a way to fund the physicians.
Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
At this time, you move on to the agenda. Um, the next item up is item seven, unfinished business for town meeting action, and we have none, so we'll move on to citizens' statements and petitions. If anyone would like to make comment, or just ask me to step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Um, the public comment period is for an aggregate of forty-five minutes, and each citizen's presentation shall not exceed five minutes, um, unless otherwise indicated by majority over the town council. shall not exceed five minutes unless otherwise indicated by majority or by the town council.
Good evening. My name is Evan Bergeron. I live on 115 Black Hill Road in Plainfield. I understand that I am not a killing the resident, however, I was the one who provided the budget for the Fire Corps Peer Support Group. Like Dr. McNeil had stated, we have not been an organization for a year yet, so trying to determine average costs for things was quite difficult. The budget that I proposed is based off of state averages for labor material and so forth, as well as just generalized costs for training, not having concrete numbers. That being said, I am also available for any questions after the meeting if anything else needs to be discussed.
We did have two public comments submitted. Both of them are available on the town's website for review. They're included in the agenda. One of them was in regards to homeless in the area and keeping the town safe and cleaning the town up. The other one was in regards to comments that had been made at a previous meeting in a downtown meeting. So do we have any further public comments? Mr. Conroy, was there anything submitted other than those two?
There were just those two.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll move on to the agenda. Item nine is council and staff comments.
I just, would like to address Mr. Bergeron's comments. One of the things that I found helpful with the ambulance when they came with their new business was the next year they came with the budget again and we could see how far off they were, so.
I move to suspend the rules and allow Kevin Goodrow, who missed the time, to speak. Can we do that?
No.
Is there, okay.
We got a motion made by Ms. Murphy, seconded by Ms. George, to allow continuation of public comment period. Discussion, all who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
So Kevin Goodrow Rogers, a few different addresses. So I've been doing the fire plumbing gig for like, it's going to be 50 years next year. I started when I was 14. I saw, I've, whatever these guys said, tenfold, you know, this area needs it. My brother-in-law died of PTSD when he was 53, a few years back. We didn't even know it, had no clue, and he just, you know, suicide by alcohol, you know, the one time I saw him, it was yellow, the lady was dead. He was a real smart guy. It happens, you know, I have examples, I could, I could keep it going with examples forever. When I joined, you know, the medicine bottle was under the seat of the fire truck, you know, that's, that's how we ran, you know, and, yeah, all those old boys are gone, you know, cirrhosis, but anyway. But I also have another tie, I've been in that group since before Mike, what, I've been there 30 years, that's one of my storage units down there and I'm willing to, which I don't know if we're doing, I'm re-auctioning, but I, there's a lot of stuff there. I'm going to empty that place so they can do that. I have no qualms whatsoever. Over the years, with Bernie's on, and I mean, I've got probably close to $4 million in rent and he's going to lose, you know, $640 a month just for me getting out of there and plus the space upstairs, I'm sure equals that. He's giving up a couple of grand a month for an already established business. I heard Michelle mention earlier that, you know, you wouldn't want to see anything else go in there, maybe ruin the aesthetic, because it is beautiful. I spend time down there, you know, just because it's peaceful and, you know, I think he's going backwards as far as equity goes by just, hey, here, take my place and do what we've got to do, because it is important to everybody in this room and many, many more people, you know. So I think you should bend some rules and do whatever you've got to do to make this happen. If not, there's going to be a lot of disappointed people, you know. And we hope your house doesn't get you in a fight. We don't have to work hard to survive.
I believe he is in Williamsville, so.
Yeah, you know, we can, I'm just saying. But thank you, and really, these guys, I was so sad to see them so disappointed and like there were failures sitting there. That really bothered me. Oh, wow.
Thank you.
Thank you for.
Any more public comment?
Members of the council, my name is.
Can you state your name and address?
My name is Dr. Jerry Grunkel. I am of Woodstock, Connecticut. So I am a business owner, specifically in the health and wellness industry, and I'm a proud Army veteran, having most recently served as a Major in the Elite 160th Special Operations Aviation Regiment. For the past seven years, I've stood alongside soldiers who consistently put the needs of others before their own. And tonight, I stand before you shoulder to shoulder with community heroes who share the same spirit for service and sacrifice. My perspective is shaped by two worlds, one of the soldier and one of the healthcare professional. I've seen firsthand the physical and emotional toll placed on those who serve in the front lines, whether in combat or within our own communities. The men and women you see here tonight are not ordinary, they're exceptional. Yet across the United States, our fire departments, police forces, and EMS agencies are facing a crisis. Recruitment is down, retention is faltering, and the pool of candidates who are both willing and physically able to serve is shrinking. In any mission, those who fail to adapt are the first to fall behind. As leaders in this community, you have a responsibility to act, not just to preserve the safety of our citizens, but to support those who dedicate their lives protecting them. The Quiet Corner Peer Support Group has developed a groundbreaking selfless innovation that addresses the crisis head-on. This program isn't just moral imperative, it's a strategic investment in the future of our emergency services. We've already seen the cost of training recruits rise while the number of qualified applicants continues to fall. Programs like ASAP offer proactive solutions. They strengthen recruitment, boost retention, and show our first responders that in this community, we firmly stand behind them. So I ask you to consider this. One day, you may dial 911 for a loved one, and when you do, what happens if the only response you hear is silence? Thank you.
Any further public comment?
Hi, Jeff Woodbinder, 546 Warrior Road. As I was listening to the, as I was listening to the talking about the legal opinion, I had asked my, that's my legal counsel, who's my sister-in-law, she's a practicing attorney out in, out in the other part of the state. I had asked her about whether or not they could run in any kind of issues having, having the property, and she had made three suggestions. One was demonstrating the nonprofits. Improvements were made for the benefit of the nonprofit, were in line with its purpose or mission and not something to benefit the owner of the property. Secondly, a safeguard that the owner would reimburse the cost of improvement if they left, which I would assume would be able to be written in. And a third one was making sure that the nonprofit is making the decisions as to the improvements, that's not something that's being, something that's not coming in from the owner of the property, so probably something like having Mike recuse himself from it. So that was, those were the suggestions that she'd made to try to avoid any kind of IRS entanglements. I don't know if that's of any help.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Last call for public comment. Seeing no further public comment, we will now move on to the agenda. We'll move back to item nine, council staff comments. Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item up is item 10A. Brenda Kuti is seeking appointment to the Water Pollution Control Authority as an alternate member. Her term would run from November 1st, 2024 to October 31st, 2026. This would be alternate member position number two. The Water Pollution Control Authority currently has one alternate member vacancy. The alternate member term's run for two years from November 1st to October 31st. I will entertain a motion to appoint Ms. Kuti. Motion was made by Ms. Barclay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Murphy. Discussion.
Again, happy to have somebody from the previous year to step up to volunteer.
I concur. Any other comments? Seeing none, all who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item up on the agenda is item 10B, Dave Griffiths, receiving reappointment to the NDTH Board of Health. As a regular member, his new term would run from July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2028. This would be regular member position number one. The NDTH Board of Health currently has one alternate member vacancy, and again, the regular member term runs for three years from July 1st to June 30th. I am aware that Mr. Griffiths did not come before us last week to interview. NDTH had reached out to town staff asking if we could, would consider reappointing him without coming for an interview due to his term expiring. I will entertain a motion to reappoint Mr. Griffiths.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion was made by Ms. George, seconded by Ms. Wakefield. Discussion.
I would say Dave is very active. I served on NDTH with him. He's been a board member for a very long time and yes, we definitely want to reappoint him.
Thank you. Any further comments? I'd like to say that Mr. Griffiths has definitely served this community for a very long time as a volunteer and just want to thank him for all his years dedicated to the community. Any further comments? Seeing none, all who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on to the agenda. Next item up is item 11A, Board of Education Liaison. And I do not see a Board of Ed liaison in yours, so we'll move on to item 11B, Borough Council Liaison.
All right. The borough met last, a couple of weeks ago on May the 21st. Heidi Clifford was out, so we went through what we needed to do when we appointed Lynn LaVerge as our president pro temp for the night. We had to make an amendment to a motion we had made in the April meeting about the fire chief had been reappointed, but his term had expired, so we had to withdraw that two-year appointment we had given him. So Chief Kelleher was then subsequently given, appointed as interim until the fire commissioners could work on a, they were supposed to be working on a new position description or qualifications for fire chief, which is kind of throws us into a conundrum, but what was interesting in the fire commissioners report is kind of like goes along rather well with what was brought up tonight. Out of 713 calls that were called in, 71 were missed. And about 10% of the calls in the 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM slots, about 10% of those are missed. Firefighter retention has dropped 62% in eight years, and that's just in the volunteer numbers, and then paid firefighters have dropped 50%. It's a tough job as somebody that grew up in the fire station and my dad also grew up, literally grew up in the fire station. I see, I've seen the work that these guys do. My brother, Spade, gave several decades of service to the fire service and is no longer doing it. My daughter is an EMS, runs, is an EMT, and the stuff she sees and talks about, and I'm glad she can come to me and talk to about it, but, and we kind of decompress each other, but it's, it would turn most people's stomachs. It really would. It's heart-wrenching. These guys don't even get paid. My daughter gets paid probably less than the person working at Walmart, and that's terrible because she could save their life. But that's, with some of the stats they threw out, Chief was very passionate about doing whatever we could for firefighters and one of the other things, oh, I meant to, they did actually send us some pictures. I meant to forward them on. When I get home, I'll forward them on to you. We actually have pictures of the new truck. It's very nice. That should be getting delivered, if not soon, probably within the next month. The plan is to list the old truck so that we actually can make room for it before the new truck gets here. Our suspension list for taxes that couldn't be collected, a little less than the town's, was only $621.75. We did approve a lawn care contract for doing the grass and that, and the landscaping around the fire department with some limitations. Precision Concrete's going to be doing some sidewalk repairs. Basically, if you ever walk down the sidewalk and it looks like somebody took a razor blade and shaved, that's what they do. They shave the sidewalks so that they're even and they're not a trip hazard. That's about $15,000. And we reappointed our auditors and we're going to be doing some training come September. We meet next week for our last meeting before September. We take July and August off. It is air-conditioned now on the second floor of the fire station, but in the past, it hasn't been, so, but we still take July and August off. So next month will be my last borough report until probably October.
Thank you. Next item up on the agenda is item 12A, discussion and acceptance of monthly budget reports, summary report on general fund appropriations for town government. Can I get a motion to accept this? Motion made by Ms. George, seconded by Ms. Barclay. Questions, comments? Seeing none, all who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item up is item 12B, discussion and acceptance of monthly budget reports, system object based on adjusted budget for the Board of Education. Can I get a motion to accept this?
So, look.
Motion made by Ms. Wakefield, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Murphy. Discussion, questions, comments? Seeing none, all who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on to the agenda. Next item up is 13A, correspondence, communications, and reports, the town manager's report. Mr. Conroy, if you could.
Yes, sir. Somehow I always seem to start off with the police department, that's a soft spot for that. Finally, we received our blue light phone, it's fully activated. When you go by, you'll see it has a small strobe effect to it, so it's visible from the road, it has a very large red button, and as soon as you point it, it will dial 911 automatically. It's been tested and works fine. I'm also, I've been taking the test to become the local traffic authority, which is required by statute. So we can, uh, do things like, uh, request, uh, road safety audits, traffic signal signing, pavement markings, and control signals, and other items that we believe that I can prove in trade and such like that. So that's ongoing. It's a couple of, like, uh... Uh, we've had the police department and the armed security officers have requested collecting, bargaining, bargaining petitions with the state labor board. Those elections will be held next week. That's all been posted. Uh, the resident trooper contract starts July first. Uh, the cost is a hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three, fifty-two, and that's based on eighty percent of the total cost of that. I did a walk with the town of Putnam, the DDP, on extension of the river trail that would go from Putnam all the way down to Etawagin crossing. Uh, that was just to look at two alternatives. Uh, DDP looks like they want to use the old trolley bed that runs between the river and closer to three ninety-five. They're going through the power lines. That would be problematic due to the pitch of the, the area and how they would have to make it AED compliant. So they thought the trolley bed would be better because it's already raised. And Putnam's leaning on that. Windham Energy, they withdrew their request for application for the athletic, uh, athletic, electric generating facility located on Lake Road. So according to the county, citing council, declared these matters are no longer pending for the agency. And we recently, we renewed the lease for parcels of label on loop six. That's from the old rotary. That includes the parking lot, right, for some intentions. That would be, uh, for another five years.
I agree. Questions from council, comments? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item up is item thirteen B, WPCA moratorium update. Mr. Conroy, is there?
This is from Dave, Dave Capper, the engineer. But the contract for the scope of services identified in the RFP is being completed. Once it's completed, it'll be submitted to the town attorney in Connecticut D and then executed. Uh, once executed, all the work will identify the upgrades to the WPCF, which is most effectively the future needs of the community. It's still a work in progress.
Thank you. Um, I would like to acknowledge, uh, we did receive the results from the Board of Education vote. The Board of Education budget did pass. There were five hundred and ninety-eight people who voted yes, four hundred and four people that voted no. Um, we had three hundred and eighty-five people that indicated that the Board of Ed budget was too high and thirty-eight that indicated it was too low. Um, it was a nine point three percent turnout with nine, a total of nine hundred and ninety-five people have voted. Moving on to the agenda, next item up is item fourteen, unfinished business for town council action. We have nothing for that this evening. So move on to item fifteen A, consideration and action on the resolution regarding the use of federal fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, state homeland security grant funding and custodial ownership of regional assets in the DMHS region four. Mr. Conroy, could you just give us a brief description on this one?
It's for assets they give us, like we have the trailer that's stored at the town garage. It has all the traffic signals, so we store that, and that's part of that. And in the future, hopefully, we can get more equipment, and that's with the agreements for us to install it here and take custody of it.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution regarding the use of federal fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, state homeland security grant funding, custodial ownership of regional assets in the DMHS region four. Motion is made by Ms. George. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Murphy. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item up on the agenda is item fifteen B, consideration and action on a resolution to award up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the Quiet Corner Peer Support Group from the town of Killenley's opioid settlement funds based on the amount allocable to opioid programs as defined by Connecticut statute of section seventeen A, six seventy-four C. Uh, can I get a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Motion was, uh, made by Ms. Wakefield. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. George. Um, I will open up for discussion. I don't know if we want to allow, um, the members from the support group to come up and speak and answer any further questions we may have.
I, I believe, um, Michelle was interested in, um, Jen Hawkins, our finance director's comments.
Okay.
So I'll make that motion.
We would have to...
I make a motion to suspend the rules, so he can speak and Jen can speak. And do we want anyone else to speak? I mean, open it to anybody, anybody else. Okay, I make that motion.
Aye.
Do I need to withdraw my, or amend mine?
Uh, I would say amend your motion to allow, um, the finance director, uh, Mr. McNeil and Mr. Shenius to...
Is that the only people that need to... Okay, yeah, well, we get the most...
Second.
We've got a motion and a second discussion. All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Jen, if you would like to. Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
So we just, I just was informed, we have kind of a, a little challenge from an anonymous donor to everybody out there watching on the TV and stuff. Somebody just came and said they will donate five thousand dollars to our cause. They'll match up to anybody to five thousand. So if he wants to donate, he'll match it to five thousand. So everybody that's out there, that's, this is what we're running into. This is the good people that are coming forward. But that was just presented to me, and they want to say it anonymous, which is fine, but there is a challenge out there where they're like, anybody wants to donate, they'll donate five grand.
Now, where can people make those donations for anybody who's at home listening or in the audience?
They can make it to the Quiet Corner Peer Support Group. I'm at the firehouse of Daville almost every day. And what was the PO Box sixty-one?
PO Box sixty-one, Daville.
PO Box sixty-one. PO Box sixty-one, Davilsen, or... Or two oh four Hartford Pike, Daville.
Mike, I'm going to match that back. So there's two addresses if you wanted to donate, or PO Box sixty-one, Davilsen Post Office. Um, zip code there is zero six two three nine, or that was two oh four Hartford Pike.
Yeah.
That would be Daville, is zero six two four one, correct?
And we just had another match of it. So that's ten grand already.
That is awesome. All right, um, now, you have questions. Ms. Murphy, you have questions for...
Sure, Jen. Uh, I was just wondering, it sounds like the, it was a language change and, uh, and a thought process change from the beginning of the process to where we are now. Uh, can you tell us why you feel that, that would pass, you know, muster with the law?
No, I basically, just to clarify the problem of everything that happened, um, from my perspective anyway. Um, the fiscal subcommittee, uh, where everything had, had been first been presented, um, the way that the statute reads, it's very specific on the areas that the opioid funds can be used for. So the question that was left at the end of fiscal sub was, is, was, uh, you know, is there information that can be provided to us that would allow town to be able to allocate, you know, uh, you know, for instance, at that time, based on the information we had in front of us, it did not appear whether or not everything was going to be eligible. Pieces of it likely are, correct, right? I think we all can agree on that. Um, so, uh, the conversations that have been had amongst, and amongst some further research that, uh, the acting town manager and myself have been doing, um, you know, is, you know, could we get some statistics to be able to determine which pieces of their core support services would specifically be, could be identified and be allocable to the opioid settlement funds? If that's the case, then, you know, you could make your award and only, you know, fund those pieces that are eligible. Um, and I think that's the basis of the way the motion is written. Because it seemed like, you know, we're still, there's still, this program is very new. It's, it's, we're extremely unique. And the statute is very specific. Um, it's not to say that it wouldn't be determinable, but even my suggestion was that, you know, once I had more information, you know, is there, we have contacts at the state based on the reporting that I have to do. Could we then, you know, contact them and have them help us review this to determine whether or not it would be eligible? Um, so that is the information gathering stage that we have been doing since we've left fiscal sub. I don't know if that answers.
So this, basically, this motion is to allocate this money...
Up to a hundred and twenty-five...
If, if, based on the pieces that we can determine that would be eligible under the statute. If approved.
Correct.
If approved.
It would basically give us the ability to, you know, fund some pieces directly that we think are eligible and let us continue to do some homework on some of those other pieces that maybe we're questioning.
Now, have you received any more information since fiscal subcommittee that would concretely say this piece or that piece would definitely be eligible?
Um, I was, personally, I was trying to, uh, make that percentage allocation from an indirect-direct percentage. Um, the information that has just come in in the last couple of days, I need to actually review that and try to calculate some things. So I have not specifically been able to determine, you know, with concrete is what that would be. Uh, the acting town manager also, um, found some very specific information through the Settlement Advisory Committee, that the, basically, the state has their own, you know, committee that can distribute their funds as well, but also advise us. Um, so I was looking to actually pull, we were looking to actually pull some information together and, and apply, not really apply, but just see if they would help us with the determination. That potentially as well, um, because they're always looking for new ideas, but that committee has very specific pieces or pro... This is actually information that's only come to light in the last couple of days. This has been a very fluid situation. That state, that fund is actually also is, would potentially allow more monies to be available to this group, because it wouldn't just be the Killenley funds, it would then be the state funds. So I think it would be a great benefit to everyone to continue to work with that. And actually, you know, uh, Mr. Conroy was, was able to find that. However, in that, that criteria, that provides very specific things that programs can be used for. And it was, made it further, you know, more difficult to determine what pieces would be eligible specifically. And I think that might be where the question of the building might have come up. If I, you know, I'm not going to put, you know, I'm not going to, I'm just, that's my kind of idea. But in listening to people talking, more information has been provided, there's been more information provided since Monday, I think that we still need to actually look at it. And I think everyone agreed, as you have mentioned, that we want, we, we would love to give all of them funding to them. So let's see what we can do to kind of work towards making that happen for everybody. I think there's, which is also the reason why the motions are written the way that you are, to allocate as we find pieces eligible. I don't know if that further.
So...
I'd like to see, um, as, as long as it's, as long as, like I said, the town isn't going to be, you know, held responsible for the funding, I would like to see at least bump it up to one fifty, if not the, if not the full amount. If, if approved and if granted by the state, that they'll allocate that money to them, I think we should. Because that, that kind of saves, saves us on the attorney making a decision, right? And ultimately, the state's going to give out the funding.
The, the other thing too, to answer, Michelle, I, Michelle had another question I just thought of that I didn't answer and, um, that you mentioned earlier. I think, or maybe it wasn't Michelle, but somebody had asked, well, what happens if we, you know, grant out these funds, if you will, and somewhere down the line, somebody determines that what we have done is not eligible? We would have a, basically, a compliance finding that would be reported on under audit, whether it's our, our external audit with our auditors, or if the state ever did an audit, that's first and foremost. And secondly, we would then have to then pay back those funds. So that's ultimately the risk that's at play here. It wouldn't mean that, you know, we would kind of almost get penalized and have to pay the funds back. But that's, that's your ultimate risk there.
So who makes the decision, so this, this funding's available, it's a hundred bucks. So we automatically just give it to them?
No.
And then, and I'm asking you that. You automatically just give that to them, and then the state approves it, and then we're...
No, it's basically, it's basically subject to audit later. So we're subject to audit under our external audit that, you know, we do every year. And they audit programs and how we disburse funds and something like this, especially given that you're transact, transactions over a hundred thousand dollars. Should we give more than a hundred thousand dollars in one year, it'll automatically be subject to state single audit. So it'd likely be a program that would be tested by our annual audit. And then secondly to that is, is we don't know down the line if the state or some federal branch that's determining these settlement funds is then going to want to do their own separate programmatic audit. That happens often with these types of things. Um, so far, I've only been asked to basically report things in more of a survey setting of what our plans are for the funds, what are we doing with the funds? You know, wh, you know, have you don't, have you, have you given funds out yet for what programs? And we all, everything we've done so far is, we've been hearing proposals, but we haven't actually awarded everything. So that was basically what the town has reported in this last reporting go-around.
So in other words, we give the money out and we're responsible for...
Correct. We are responsible for determining compliance. Someone may, down the road, may or may not agree with us, right?
Right.
But we are ultimately responsible for determining compliance, which is why, you know, it was, we, we gave what we had to legal thus far.
Right. So I, I kind of fall back on the legal advice. I think, I think we moved the motion ahead and put something mumbo jumbo about legal approval, but I think we do bump it up to...
I'd like to go to the whole...
I don't care.
I'd like to go to the back, so I'd suggest...
But I think there should be stipulation of our legal counsel to give his blessing, as best as he can.
I do have one question, um, and this is for the finance director. Jen, I know in our town charter, and I'm trying to remember where it is, where it talks about supplemental appropriations. Is grant funding considered, is spending that's...
No. No, this is, this is a separate fund that's outside of taxpayer dollars. It has nothing to do with your general fund appropriations.
Okay.
I mean, should you choose to fund something that is outside of that opioid fund, you could either handle it through the budget process, or at any time, the town could, could entertain a supplemental appropriation, which the, the language is up to one percent of the prior year's general government budget.
Yeah, well, that's where it gets murky.
It's prior year because if you were to, if you were to then do it in this year's budget, right, now, say, just say you appropriated a hundred thousand dollars to some supplemental appropriation. Now you've raised your threshold in this year to do more, right? So it's always against the prior year. Does that make sense?
Yeah. The, the one thing, it, it actually, if, if I remember right, the town charter, the wording was town operating budget.
Correct. And it's basically the general government portions of the fourteen million, so it's, it, it's one forty-four roughly.
Yeah, that was, that was, that was why I had the question, whether the grant was bound to that, because I know over that would have to go to...
No, it would have to...
Public hearing, town meeting.
This is completely a separate fund.
All right, awesome. Thanks for that clarification.
Can that, um, those funds be, um, paid out if a receipt is, um, provided, so based on receipt?
I have not looked into that language that was brought up tonight. That actually, I, it might be buried in the public act, but that specific language about we can't reimburse or, or whatever, that specifically was said, I can't, I can't comment on that right now. I have to do some homework.
So the exact wording I found was, um, "The fund specifically prohibits using funds to reimburse past expenditures or supplant existing funding streams." And it's footnote three in this document.
So yes, that basically allows us to give an advance fund of advance. We don't, we don't have to make it a cost reimbursement grant.
Yeah, so...
And I think it doesn't want you, I think by past funds, and I'd, I'd have to get clarification on this, but I think on past funds it means it doesn't want us awarding the funds for... on this, but I think on past funds, it means it doesn't want us awarding the funds for something that happened prior to the settlement receipt. I don't know that it means that, okay, you've spent, you know, fifty thousand dollars two months ago, and now you're applying for reimbursement. I, I don't, I don't think that's what that means, but again, I'd have to do some.
Okay. So, so the wording we have for the, for this resolution, if we were to approve that, every, any expenditure would come from the finance department, and you would, the finance department would make the decision on whether that was-
I am ultimately, as your treasurer, in charge of dispersment of funds, and part of my job is to determine compliance, so if I had any question, you know, obviously I work with our staff too, but ultimately, that is a major part of my job function, so yes.
Because I think that would definitely give a lot of peace of mind to council members that if we were to award the one twenty-five or a higher amount, that it isn't like we would be handing it all over to the peer support group, the money would be handled by town staff, and then as it's deemed that this is an eligible expenditure, then the money would get dispersed to-
And then I'm required to report on that, those funds, and then I'm subject to audit.
Yeah.
So I have a question. So Jen, you had the gentleman come up and talk about the three different things about making the building compliant. If we award, you'll just work on, you can work on the language and submit, right?
Yeah. So I'm gonna put on my old hat for right now, for a second, so it's been a long time since I looked at a Form 990, however, I used to spend a lot of my time doing that, and the government in the mid, more recent years, past ten years, maybe even more, has made departments really stringent, so everything that was mentioned tonight in public comment about things that can be done in order to protect the status of the organization, those are all correct. That, that, it's basically, when you file your Form 990, again, I'm not sure if Quiet Corner, in this stage, would be subject to a full 990, a 990E, or a, or some, yeah, there's, there are many different 990s. However, in the typical 990, it used to be pages and pages of assurances that the organizations have to attest to in order as part of reporting on their 501(c) status every single year. I would imagine the 990 N still has all those items, so those specific items that were mentioned tonight in comment would be items that would be addressed by those assurances, and those would be things that the organization by policy would, would likely want to do in order to ascertain that. It's not even just from a town perspective, it's, it's an inherent, you know, good practice from a nonprofit organization.
I had another question too about compliance, like, what would a compliance hit mean? Do you have any idea, would we lose a, a step in our ratings?
So, no. Nor, normally, what would happen if we had a compliance finding would be, we'd be then required to create a corrective action plan. We also could be subject to losing future funding. Usually, usually if you submit a corrective action plan and that you've already addressed or mitigating those factors that, you know, are noncompliant, they usually don't pull your funding. If you refuse to make corrective action, they could, they could pull your funding, so then we'd be, we would potentially face the loss of future settlement funds.
Thank you. I do have one question. Do you have the exact figure for what we have in the opioid settlement fund right now?
I believe I do here in the, or if you unpack it, I'll just pull it up, but let me just-
Let me just go up to the break and just keep going.
I believe I wrote on the back of it, so.
So I just have a policy question for, going forward. Is there a way that we can earmark these funds, or the peer support group, go, by the way time the opioid settlement, so that we can establish an annual donation for these funds to them going forward, for the life of the-
The one thing that may become difficult is we have no idea how much we're getting each year or for how many years, but I would definitely encourage them to come back every year and see what-
So, so they would have to come every year instead, we, we, there's nothing we can write, Jen?
Well, the, the, when we get the funds, the fiscal subcommittee could reach out to the peer support group and say, we have this much in funds, would you, how much could you use?
We could also treat it the same way we treat some other funds that the fiscal sub disperses from, where we have to entertain that annually, I'm thinking of the-
That's what, that's what I made the last meeting, the two elections.
I mean, normally, that's where that would go, is fiscal sub, and we would entertain that.
Now, the dispersments we've been getting for this fund, are they coming in a certain, because I know we get a, a few different dispersments, do they come at one point, or they come multiple times throughout the year?
I have no real basis to know when they're coming and how much is coming. I, I get notification, it shows up the saying, okay, you're not getting this much money, and this is when you should expect to receive it. I think maybe in another year or so, when we have more of a trend, it'll be a little bit more predictable, but right now, in that first, you know, when they first started dispersing funds, they were making dispersments more frequently, because I think as, and it also changes too, because if, if the courts reach another piece of the settlement with another organization that they feel is responsible, the, the allocations change. So, you know, there's, I think that now might be over, but again, I think that I, we get our arms around it, and we've had multiple staff try to research, because the spreadsheets are very cumbersome, and we've even contacted people at the state, and it's very difficult to determine. I wish I had a good answer for you, because it does not make my finance firm happy.
One, one thing I could recommend would be, as the peer support group is doing an annual budget, which I'm assuming you would be doing, is while you're working on your budget, reach out to, to town, to town finance department, reach out to the town council, fiscal subcommittee, and say, we're working on our budget, what do you have that's available this year? So I, I think that would be one thing to do going forward as well. So, as well, if you have a chance-
Yeah, the figure is one sixty-six, one seventy, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty cents is what's in the fund currently right now.
Thank you. So I've heard it mentioned to up the amount from one twenty-five up to a higher amount. I, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, to amend the, amend the motion that's on the table, from the one twenty-five up to the one sixty-six, one seventy-nine.
So moved.
Motion be by Ms. George, seconded by Mr. Whitehead. Discussion. All is in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. So now, on, on the table, the motion is, I will read it off as amended. Consideration and action on a resolution to award up to one hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars to the Quiet Corner Peer Support Group for the town of Killenly's opioid settlement funds based on the amount allocated, allocable to opioid programs as defined by Connecticut Statute Section seventeen A six seventy-four. So that is the motion that is now on the table. Any further discussion?
I'd like the roll call vote.
Okay. So we have a roll call vote. Mr. Conroy, would you mind doing a roll call?
I have a discussion.
Okay.
I have to say, I've been really swayed by the, I, I really appreciate, you have to understand, some of us do really due diligence about legality, and then, you know, some of us, you know, have sort of passed, and we're not quite as legal, and at some point during the whole discussion, I was like, what do I care what the state of Connecticut thinks? You know, so I'll just put it out there, you know, if we, if we get spanked, or we do something wrong, we, we told the state of Connecticut, take your ninety thousand dollars and stick it up your wahoo, you're not gonna tell us what to do, so let's, uh, take a chance.
Point, point of order two, the motion that's in the agenda packet does not have town manager's approval signature on it, would that impact this motion? Just wanted to make sure we're legally covered, so everything else-
I did check on that. It does not impact it.
I don't think we need a roll call, because I don't think there's gonna be any days here.
We did have a request for it.
I'd like a roll call.
Okay. All right. So we had a request for a roll call vote. Mr. Conroy, if you could do the roll call vote, please. Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Wakefield?
Yes.
Mr. Enison?
Yes.
Ms. George?
Absurd freaking lingo.
Absurd freaking lingo.
I think that is a yes. Ms. Park?
Yes.
Motion carries. At this time, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up on the agenda is item fifteen C, consideration action on the resolution to award up to forty thousand dollars to Northeast District Department of Health for establishment of a community health program related to opioid reduction programs and data collection, considering that we already allocated all the funds in the opioid settlement. I don't know that we have, we can take any action on this item.
No, obviously we can't, so we send more money, so.
Seeing no motion and no second, we'll move on in the agenda. The next item up is sixteen, council members' reports and comments. Ms. Parkwood, could you start, please?
I didn't attend the housing authority meeting, because we had a town council meeting from the planning and zoning unfinished business, Hartford Pike. It was continued from April twenty-first, and it's the cannabis row facility. They needed a little bit more information, but it looks like it's going to be approved. And B and B Car Wash was continued to June sixteenth, that's on Warrigan Road, they needed a permit for general discharge of wastewater, and on four eighty-four to four ninety-four Putnam Pike, AT&T services, they want to construct a new steel carport on the existing parking lot, that was referred to staff, and then five eighty-one Hartford Pike, in the old package store in Killenly Collins, the construction and opening of a Chipotle restaurant, that was also referred to staff.
Thank you.
So, whoops. NCOG, we met, their annual one is complete. Got it? Okay. One of the large animal control lawsuits has been settled, and all of those animals are finding homes. Safe streets for all, there is a webinar June twenty-fifth, and Jim Larkin is running that, if anyone wants the information, I can send you the link. Eastern Regional Tourism District, we are meeting this Thursday morning at the Great Wolf Lodge for the annual meeting, and NDTH, I have my board of directors meeting Thursday.
Thank you. I attended the fiscal subcommittee that we had talked about earlier, I also attended cable advisory committee. There was discussion, a couple towns were discussing how they're improving the AV equipment they have in their town meeting rooms, didn't realize how many town meetings are actually not televised, and that there are actually some that weren't even already recorded. And I also attended the vision committee meeting, they're still working in the process of getting set up and get everything going with that, but it was encouraging to, to hear a lot of what they spoke about. Ms. Whitehead?
The nineteenth of May was the border recreation, lots of stuff going on, as, you know, as, as their little phrase, it's, you know, KPRD, it's just for the fun of it, lots of stuff going on. Correspondence, the Burgery Charitable Trust, which has, you know, over the last few years, donated money to help pay for camperships for Camp Wallaby, has committed to a two-year grant of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the lights and sound in the new auditorium at the, where we're at Westfield Ave, which is a huge, that means that people have great, that it's gonna be a huge thing, because right now, what they have is, they had to take everything out because of the water and electrical issues, so. The bike, there was a bike grant that was received, and the bike rodeo, which was supposed to be on the thirty-first, obviously got rained out, because, you know, that's all we do on Saturdays, is poor rain. So they're hoping to be able to reschedule it, I know last year they had a lot of participation. The Lions, if you've ever gone out to a local event, the Lions have their little trailer, and they're selling, you know, hot dogs and hamburgers and drinks and all that good stuff. They take that money and they give it back, and during their night of giving, they gave seven hundred and twenty-five dollars to help pay for Camp Wallaby camperships, they gave two hundred dollars to the Little Theater on Broad Street. The Little Theater on Broad Street also got a donation from the Brooklyn Public Schools during Wizard of Oz, one of the day performances that they attended, it was opened up, I think it was, I know our kindergartners went, but I believe it was a group of special needs students, they were able to go to the, like, sensory friendly show, so they, they actually donated a hundred dollars to the theater for that, for inviting them, and from what I understand, the students all enjoyed the performance, which is great, art is a great way to help kids cope with different things. Westfield Ave, we got an update on that, the red, white, and blue, they have actually made, I don't know if anybody noticed on Facebook, they posted it, twenty thousand dollars has been raised through donations for the, that might seem like a lot, but in terms of fireworks and the band, it's really not a lot of money. There is a face painter that has agreed to also be at the park that night, so the park, the vendors and the food are all gonna be up there. New business, Wendy's Fusco, which is one of our master gardeners, has been working really hard in Cat Hollow, discussed that there were Ag students that showed up, they gave almost three hours, in three hours, they removed twenty-nine invasive root balls of different plants in that area. She was very excited, they, during Earth Day, they cleaned out the Valley Road entrance, so now you actually can go down to the, to the water and fish, and can view the waterfalls and that. I asked about the lady beetles that we released last summer, apparently, they survived the winter, and the trees are looking really good, so maybe we can, I know we had used some money from, I think, the forestry management to get the initial bundle of bugs, but maybe, maybe, just maybe, we might be able to get a few more, because there are a few more trees that are still being impacted. I mean, those little bugs can only eat so much, you know? And, let's see, what else? Oh, and then, of course, in order to be able to pay for more upgrades at Cat Hollow, because money is kinda tight, Wendy and Lisa Danberg, who actually we just appointed to conservation, I believe, came forward with an idea for fundraising, they're actually gonna create, with Warren down in Danielson Surplus, some hats and some shirts, where, so that'd be pretty cute, the cat- Danielson Surplus, some hats and some shirts, where, so pretty cute. The cat, the hat, the actual baseball cap actually has a cat, and on the back will say Cat Hollow, Dable, Connecticut. And there's a whole t-shirt, and people will be able to buy them. And the proceeds would go back to like, there's a garden that they're talking about putting in. It's gonna cost five, $600. So the Board of Rec agreed to work with them. There is a way for new programs like that, that there's a funding source. I know, anything that's a new program, something with rec allows them to like set up a temporaries on, like in the first year or two. And I'm sure Jen probably knows better about that than how that new program, have a balance, a fund that they can put things in. Anyways, the Board of Rec decided, voted to let them do that, so that we can get this new program going to upgrades for Cat Hollow. All, the sports camps are pretty much all filled. Higia's gonna be opening up this month. The River Trail Run has got like 15 people doing that. That's a weekly run that they're doing up and down the River Trail. And I guess they had a lighthouse cruise that was completely full. So the other thing we, we talked about was upgrading facility fees, particularly once we moved to Westfield Ave for in-town and out-of-town. They, they were based off of what we were doing, and then looking at what other towns were doing. So they, the Board of Rec approved the, the fee increases. They, they only went up like maybe five or $10. Like to rent the gymnasium an hour went from 50 to 60. So, or using a, a field for three hours was $60 instead of $50. So, I mean, it's, it's pretty reasonable compared to other places that don't even, can't even do that. So we want our parks used and our fields used, and we want people out and recreating, so that's why they did.
Thank you. I just want to add one thing. Fiscal Subcommittee, we had requests for the Shubal Hutchins Trust. The fiscal Subcommittee, they have done what they've done in the past. The requests were for, I believe they were $1,500 apiece, one for Community Kitchen, and one for Westfield Church. We had received a little over $1,300 in interest on the fund, as fiscal Subcommittee's done in the past. Rather than expending the fund itself, we expended the interest, so we split the interest evenly, gave $650 to each of the two, being Community Kitchen and Westfield Church. Ms. Murphy?
I had two Board of Education meetings. It was all about the budget. I did get the final. She did what they were gonna get at tonight pass. I don't remember the exact number of layoffs, and I apologize. I was looking through my stuff and I don't have it. But mostly, they were able to move the jobs around and increase the class sizes, but they did have layoffs. Three sticks in my mind, I don't want to say that that was all. That might have been just one section, not including the administrative. I can't remember. So, you know, that's always a sad thing, that there were some layoffs. And I had the wastewater plant. Most of it was executive session to do with Freedomase. We didn't get to, you know, I don't get to hear that. And then they did a presentation of all the I&amp;I they've done with tightening up the manholes and making water, watertight manholes. So that's all, yeah.
I too attended the fiscal Subcommittee, but we don't have to beat that to death. Congratulations to you guys. I'm sure you're gonna do well with it. I mean, it's much needed, but I do have to say that I think the undue comments that were made to Mr. Anderson, I think he deserves an apology, because we're all for it. Just some of us approach it differently, legally, not legally, whatever you guys you want to say. You have to do your due diligence in our position. I do believe he needs an apology. Exactly. It was uncalled for. We're all guilty.
Thank you. I do want to say, I can, I just want to bring back up what was spoken about, about Quiet Corner Peer Support Group's seeking donations and having two people who are willing to match. Again, anyone who's listening at home, the two addresses, you can send those to, one of them was PO Box 61, Danielson, Connecticut, 06239, and the other address was 204 Hartford Pike, Dable, Connecticut, 06241. And you can also, Chief Shabiness is also at the Dable Firehouse as well. At this time, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is executive session. We have nothing for executive session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion was made by Ms. Barkley, seconded by Mr. Whitehead. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Abstention. Motion carries. This meeting's adjourned is...